Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen's 2020 meeting. This is a remote participation only meeting, and please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's 12th, March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 959-869-448, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. I'm going to ask now that the remote participants, please mute your video and your microphone, and when time comes for you to either make a comment or be called upon, you may unmute both. So, and in addition, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So, for now, I'm going to call a roll of the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll proceed. Selectmen Kokolas.
Here.
Selectmen Castro.
Present.
Selectmen Matters.
Here.
Selectmen Dykens.
Here.
And obviously, I am here. Okay, so to proceed, we have the acceptance of meeting minutes for two meetings, June 2, 2020, and June 9, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 2, 2020? June 2, 2020?
No move.
Second. Second, okay. Any edits, additions, or changes to the meeting minutes? Okay, Peter?
Yeah, just small knit. Page six, second paragraph, third line. In the third line, it starts with "participants to work."
Okay.
Okay, and in page nine, third to last paragraph. Let me go down over to it. And the third line up from the bottom, which starts with "contractor." Contractor will be off the site at the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay. And I have one on page 10 also, which is another small knit, which is the first paragraph. The second to last line of the first paragraph starts with the sentence starts, "he said the Barnstable County dredge finished work," and it would be "on Mill Creek."
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I had a knit, Madam Chair, on the bottom of page seven.
Okay.
Last paragraph, third line up, "a telephone line needs to be installed," or I think it should be "or hardwired."
Okay.
There's a nine there, that's all. No biggie.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Further, no further, call up a vote. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen Dykens.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, motion moved. Second order is the meeting minutes from June 9. A motion to accept those?
No moves.
Second, okay. Any edits or additions? I see Dean. Hi, Dean.
Hi, Madam Chair, on page 16, the motion in the middle of the page, motion by Dean Castro that the board reconsider and so forth. My understanding and recollection was that the only motion I made was to support the proposal for direct votes sales, which we all voted, which four of us voted against. I did not move to reconsider, because in fact, if it were to have reconsidered and we're in a no vote, we would have left the matter with the [inaudible].
Okay, Dean, I'm not hearing you very well, and if you're not one of the selectmen, would you please mute your phone or your video, please?
Okay, I'm not sure what you heard, but I think the language that says reconsider the referral to the [inaudible] committee of the proposal by Nick Muto and to be stricken.
Okay.
It's simply a motion to support the proposal for direct votes sales.
Okay, Dean, I'm...
Yeah, it's hard to hear him.
Yeah, I'm having some difficulty with your audio, Dean. Is there a way that you could turn it up a bit and maybe move closer to your mic, just a bit?
As high as I can.
Okay.
That's even worse. That's even worse, Dean.
Yeah.
Want me to swing up and dial back in?
Yeah.
Because I didn't want to make this edit.
Okay. All right, while we're waiting for Selectmen Castro, and we have a motion on the table, I just wanted to mention the protocol that we use to conduct the meeting is that we make the presentation of the issue, and the selectmen will weigh in or ask questions. They now have the capability of either to raise their hand or virtually raise their hand or physically raise their hand, because I can see them. So, I won't be asking each an individual. I'll just ask if there's any comments, and you'll raise your hands. But when it comes to the public participants, we will poll for comments and questions, as we've been doing all along, okay? So, while we're waiting for Dean's motion, I mean Dean's edits, is there anybody else that has meeting minute edits? Peter?
A knit on page five, in the second paragraph, the fourth line down, it starts with "she said most," and it would be "events," traditionally. And then one other, I have a question. I'm not sure I remember that. I couldn't get on, I didn't get on the page nine.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
That's good. Well, on page nine. Oh, yeah, last paragraph, second line, "she described the work that needs to be done." Just one be done.
Okay.
Yeah, and I thought I had one more. Yep, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Okay, great. Dean, as you were saying?
Did I make anything substantive?
Just some editorial, nothing substantive.
On page 16, in the motion in the middle of the page, the language that says, "we consider the reconsider the referral to the [inaudible] committee of the proposal by Nick Muto and should be stricken," because the motion was simply to support the proposal for a direct vote sales program, pilot program at the fish pier. We did not take any action on reconsideration or nonconsideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, the minutes are fine.
Okay, anybody else have any meeting minutes?
All set.
Okay, then I'll take a roll. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Dykens.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, approved. All right, public announcements and agenda item requests, and I have a couple that I wanted to mention. One of them being noting the passing of Kenneth Eldridge. Ken served on the Chatham Finance Committee from 1957 to 1972, but his most greatest affiliation and relationship to the town was that he was a band member of the town band since he was 16 years old, and he also served as their director for 19 years. So, we'd just like to acknowledge his work with the town and his commitment to the culture of the community as well. Also, just to let everybody know about the COVID, Chatham Coronavirus Fund, there is quite a significant amount of money there, and families are being encouraged to apply. The second round has offered a bit more money per month for residents that are qualified to apply, and it's meant for everybody. So, please, if you're in need and you would like to get some help from the town, this money is there and available. You can visit the website for the Lower Cape Outreach Council, because they are doing the intake, or you can call Montemoy Community Services at 508-945-1117 to get assistance in any of the application process. So, that also, the Food for Kids Program, the Summer Eats Program, is going to be ongoing. Chatham will have a pickup at the Montemoy Regional Middle School and Montemoy Regional High School. That program will be Monday through Friday, June 29 to August 28, and on Fridays, meals will be given for the Saturday and Sunday. Dr. Carpenter told us at a meeting that he is there servicing up to 1,000 families or 1,000 people a week through this program, and it's significant. So, it's a good program, and it has been subsidized by the Coronavirus Impact Fund for the program to continue. Now, good news, and very gratulatory news, is the class of 2020 is graduating, and on Tuesday, June 23, unfortunately, we have a selectmen's meeting, but the graduates will have a vehicle processional through town, and the school is encouraging families from 6:30 to 7:30 to stand at safe distance apart and spots on the roof to cheer on the graduates as they pass by. It's starting at Our Lady of Grace Church in South Chatham, and will proceed down Route 28 through Harwich Port, onto South Street, to Sisson Road, to Route 39, and then to Oak Street. I just want to wish this very special class well. They have a whole different world that they're dealing with, a whole new normal. So, we wish them well, and congratulations. So, do any of the board members have any public announcements or agenda item requests that they'd like to share? Dean?
I don't know if the, I just got the raise my hand thing back, because I entered, I re-entered the meeting through the attachment on Shawna's email rather than the one on the website, so I don't know if it showed. But I do have two announcements. One, again, a final reminder, I guess, to vote. We have the election on the 25th, and you can vote by absentee ballot or early ballot by calling the town clerk. The second relates to the annual town meeting on the 22nd. I assume, Madam Chair, you might be saying something about that, and I thought I saw the moderator on this call. But the essential message that I wanted to put out is that if you're interested in attending the town meeting, it relates solely to the petition articles, you can stay home, because those articles are not going to be acted upon barring some unforeseen circumstance. I think the moderator is going to see to it that they're going to be postponed indefinitely, and the selectmen have committed last week to place them on the warrant for the special town meeting on September 19. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two. One for Cape, well, actually, two parts of the Cape Light Compact, one I mentioned last week, the new rates are out. There's a three-cent decrease per kilowatt hour, and that will start in July. It'll be on your first bill, and that amounts to, for the average user, around $18 savings a month. The second thing is the board approved a number of improved energy efficiency offers for residential and businesses. For example, for a limited time only, for the next couple of months, there's 100% rebate on your insulation, 100%, you won't have to pay for it. There's also increased rebates on things like refrigerators and so forth, about $125,000. In the businesses, there are some rebates that have to do with food and whatever. There's a number of others, but I go on capelightcompact.org, and either go to the power side for an energy efficiency audit, or to the energy efficiency and look up rebates. There's a few more that we've put on there. The second thing has to do with the census, and something that I didn't realize, I was speaking to, I was speaking to Mandy Speakman today. The 2020 census
This is a question, if that's okay, Madam Chair. It pertains to Selectmen Castro mentioning that the, all the petition articles will be deferred until the special town meeting in the fall. I believe the moderator had said that that would also be true of 1610 Main, but I wanted confirmation that that will happen, that neither 1610 or Stepping Stones will be dealt with at the annual town meeting.
Dean, do you want to just respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Elaine, for adding that. I forgot to mention that. That absolutely will be the case as well. That there will be a motion, I guess there'll be no motion on that article, the moderator is about to speak, I think. There'll be no motion on that article, and the intention of the selectmen is to place that on the warrant for the special town meeting in September. So we would have no, no action on senior center in either direction.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I saw that you're on. Do you have anything further that you'd like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield, no, simply to confirm what Mr. Castro said, that Articles 21 through 27, the petitioned articles, Article 28, the 1610 Main Street Council on Aging article, and Article 39 renaming your board, will all be moved for indefinite postponement. And that will be, we're going to talk about town meeting a little bit later, I believe, which is why I'm here, but I will entertain a motion for indefinite postponement early on. I don't usually predict votes, but I'll make an exception. It will carry, and we will not have any reconsideration. So that'll be established very early in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other public announcements or agenda item requests from the remote participants? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to new business. And we're at 6:20, we're kind of keeping track a little bit tonight to recognize the amount of time that we're spending through the night. Coronavirus, COVID-19 update by Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Robert Dunkinson, and Town Manager Jill Goldsmith. Is Dr. Dunkinson on, and would he like to make an update?
I am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, fine. Thank you.
So just quickly, right now, we have a little over 8 million cases of COVID-19 in the world, approximately 438,000 deaths. In the U.S., we have over 2 million cases now, roughly 2.1 million. So the U.S. continues with that trend of roughly 25% of the worldwide cases. We have a little over 116,000 deaths attributed to COVID-19 in the U.S. In Massachusetts, as of the four o'clock update today, we had 105,000 cases. We have 7,665 deaths in the Commonwealth. For Barnstable County alone, we currently have 1,494 cases and 131 deaths, which is up one from yesterday and slightly from the weekend as well. In Chatham alone, we currently have 20 confirmed cases and one death. And as I've indicated previously, of those 20, probably 13 or 14 or so have recovered or passed their quarantine period, and so they're no longer considered active cases, if you will. We did have a jump in the number of confirmed cases in Chatham since last week. And just to highlight that briefly, to give you an example, we had a, four cases roughly out of a five-member family related to a trip that one individual took out of state. So, you know, just to give you a sense, it's very easy to catch this and spread it to the rest of the family. So that was a, you know, just a confirmation for us as to how quickly and easily that can happen. Just a couple other quick things I wanted to touch on. One was already touched on, and that was the 2020 census and the somewhat dismal showing, if you will, by the Cape as a whole so far, so we're hoping that people really will pick up on that. Two other things are related to COVID-19. One is the state's announcement yesterday of the pop-up testing facilities for tomorrow and Thursday, primarily targeted towards individuals that have taken place in the large public gatherings over the last two weeks. As we've talked about before, there's been a large number of public protests and other types of events, and so the state is rightly trying to get a handle on just what the impact of that may be. So the state is offering free testing tomorrow, Wednesday, June 17th, and Thursday, June 18th, at roughly 52 locations around the state. There are four locations on Cape Cod, in Harwich Port, Provincetown, and Wellfleet, at Outer Cape Health Services, between the hours of eight and seven. You can make an appointment with them, or you can just show up. Obviously, they would prefer that people make appointments, but it's not absolutely necessary. And then the fourth location, not as close to Chatham, but for residents that may have family members or others that are not in Chatham. The fourth location is the CVS in East Falmouth. That is available from nine to six by appointment only. So those are areas where in the next two days, you can get free COVID-19 testing, thanks to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts trying to get a handle on what those larger demonstrations have engendered recently, that we continue to talk about their potential impacts on the state. And then the final thing that I just wanted to mention very briefly, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of discussion, and I think a lot of uncertainty with members of the public over wearing face coverings. So the state has put out, and we have indicated on our website, a face covering decision guide. So you can go on the website, it's right up towards the top of the COVID-19 page. We've also provided the graphic to Channel 18. So if people have questions about where and when they should be wearing face coverings, that is a helpful decision guide, you know, to kind of get you where you need to be. And as probably everybody knows, we do have a mandatory face covering requirement on Main Street from the Rotary to School Street, and the Board of Health has now extended that to include the Fish Pier Observation Deck, once we're able to open that, the Lighthouse Overlook, and the stairs to Lighthouse Beach, as well as at the transfer station. So just kind of reiterating that once again, so the public is aware of those things. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from my board to Dr., for Dr. Dunkinson? Dean?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob, for the update. Appreciate that. I just really want to bring up the subject of compliance with the mask requirement on Main Street. I drove down Main Street this afternoon, and most people had masks. I mean, I obviously, I was driving, so I couldn't see what was going on inside the stores, which happily are now open. But there were still enough people who did not wear masks. They tended to be younger people. So I just wanted to reiterate and perhaps ask the Board of Health in consultation with, you know, the staff and with the police, the police department, about whether we should not include on the electronic signage that there is a $300 fine. I'm not asking that the fine be levied, but I think if people realized that there was potential for some significant financial hitch, maybe we might submit more compliance. I mean, I would defer to both the Chatham Police Department and the Board of Health as to their conclusion, but I'd ask them to possibly reconsider. Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking into that right now, and we wanted to touch base with Town Council because the Board of Health specifically did not put that in their order. However, it is in the state's guidelines and the state's, the governor's order. So we believe we're covered, but we just wanted to double check with Town Council on that before we put it out there. And I've seen the same thing. I've driven Main Street multiple times. Sometimes I see better than 95% compliance, and at other times, I, you know, you're right, they tend to be the younger demographic that may not be aware. And just so everybody's aware, if you're inside a retail establishment, you should have a mask on. And most of the stores have that appropriate signage up because that is part of the governor's order that they're required inside retail establishments. So, and I think everybody's pretty well gotten the word out. I know the chamber's been getting it out as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Dunkinson? I see Cory has his hand raised. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, no, just to follow up on the observations, I mean, I am open. People fortunately in the store are biding by the face mask covering. I see a lot of disposable masks right now, so probably they're down, they went to CVS and, you know, got something for their vacation. But I do see on the streets, a lot of people not wearing masks, walking around with them in their hand, on their ear, on their chin, in their purses, whatever. So there's definitely a wide spectrum of compliance on our Main Street right now, and that's my firsthand view.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Cory. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Any, I'll take a roll of questions for Dr. Dunkinson from the remote participants. Any questions?
Elaine Gibbs?
Anybody else? Okay, Elaine, go ahead.
I would just make one comment. If you want to watch the webcam on Main Street, it's kind of amusing. I saw a woman, she was actually waving at the camera without a mask. She was clearly on her phone talking to family members. And there are a lot of people out there just watching for 10 or 15 minutes that you can see that don't have masks, and they are all demographics. I would say, I would agree that some of them are younger, a fair portion are young men in their...
Oh, I think we lost Elaine.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're clearly not all brothers, you know, four or five boys in a group in their 20s, no masks, and...
Do you have a question for Dr. Dunkinson?
I'm confirming that I think that we need to have the $300 fine, which I have been an advocate of for a long time, because that's what certain groups of people understand. They don't understand anything else, even when they're walking by people that all have masks on. So if we can put that message out, I think we all need to do it.
Thank you. Any other remote participants want to ask Dr. Dunkinson anything? Okay, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Good report. We're going to move down the line to 2020 Annual Town Meeting, June 22nd, 2020, at 6:00 PM at Veterans Field Update, and I'm going to turn it over to our Town Manager, Jill Goldsmith. Jill, hi.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. So the warrants have been mailed and received by voters. Alex and I have just completed our annual town meeting preview show, so that's been loaded to the website. And then today, the moderator and I filmed a quick PSA talking about what to expect when you go to town meeting, and tomorrow, staff will be on-site filming where people should check in, so people have as much information before they get to town meeting as possible. So before I turn it over to Terry to show us the maps, I know we have the moderator here, and I know he has some information about articles that will be bundled together and so forth, and so I'm happy to turn it over to the moderator.
Hi, Bill. Welcome again.
Thank you again. Thank you, Jill, and Shereen, Madam Chairman, as well. Then I will be brief because some of this is being publicized already, and some of you may be already aware, but we have 39 articles of the warrant, but we should be able to pare that down to about 14 or 15 votes. There are three articles, Article 1, Article 4, and Article 11, in which there will be no motion, there's no need to act on them at all. As was mentioned earlier, Articles 21 through 27 are all petitioned articles, Articles, Article 28, the 1610 Main Street Council on Aging, and Article 39, the renaming of the board will all be addressed in September. So as Mr. Castro said, that's the only reason to come to town meeting, there's no need. As for bundling consent, which I think you have, which are standard annual articles supported unanimously by the board of selectmen, which are supported unanimously by the Finance Committee, and where appropriate, have the unanimous recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee. And all of those articles will be, we will propose that the town meeting members vote for them on block. In prior years, when we have done that, we've allowed any one voter to object and take an article off. Given the extraordinary circumstances which we have, it may be the will of town meeting that if the majority want to consider them on block, that's the way we will go. Certainly, if there are specific concerns that voters or questions that voters have, we will absolutely allow that because that's the purpose of town meeting. But we also know these are extraordinary circumstances. So we will try, in the interest of public health, to minimize the town, the time that the voters will have to attend a town meeting. As Jill and the staff and Terry will be saying shortly, staff has done a fine job of setting up Veterans Field in a way that social distancing is kept, will have seating for some 500 people. We hope we have that many. I don't know if we will, but we're doing our best at the same time to minimize the amount of time that voters will have to spend at Veterans Field. My, thank you.
I have a question for the moderator. Will we be, will all votes require a ticker vote, or voice, or voice?
No.
Going to be allowed?
Good question. A voice vote will be, is anticipated on most articles if there is a close vote. And given the distance over which people are going to be spread, and Terry will show that later, hearing may be difficult, so I will probably, in many cases, use a show of cards. And we will be using, as some of you may know, a larger card, not the little two-by-three card, but a much larger one, so that I and the tellers will be able to see it. We will, we very, very rarely have secret ballots anyway, and I won't allow one frankly this year because, again, of pandemic issues. But there's no need for a counted vote unless there is a close call, and if there is a close call, we'll have the tellers do the count as we ordinarily do.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for, so far, for the moderator? Okay, all right. Jill, do you want to proceed?
Yes, so Terry, I think he's here, and, or not here, but I think he's participating, and if you can show your screen, Terry.
Yeah.
Hi, Terry, welcome.
Good evening. I am here virtually. Okay, so yeah, I just want to take this opportunity and expand upon and highlight some of the key aspects of the seating configuration and parking access plans for the June 22nd Annual Town Meeting at Veterans Field. So the graphics that were presented in the staff report that you saw, and was included in your package, were the results of multiple field coordination meetings with the moderator staff, as the moderator noted. So with that, I'm going to just run through a few slides here quickly. So at the core of the seating plan is this double-seat socially-distanced two-chair configuration. So as the moderator noted, you know, we're looking to provide a socially-distanced experience, but we still also need to, you know, kind of minimize, maximize at the same time, keeping everybody separate, but find the most efficient seating we can find. So this setup was primarily selected to provide flexibility for accounting for the mix of attendees that come to town meetings. Some come in pairs, some come as singles. So again, this is modeled on some similar setups that are being used by other communities with open town meetings. So for the actual setup, we have the double seats, which are indicated by these blue squares with rounded corners, that grouped into blocks with 15 rows, with a capacity of up to 10 persons per row, with an eight-foot-wide aisle for social distance and transit in front of and behind each row. So as part of our review of the meeting's timing, you know, in the afternoon on June 22nd, and consideration of the path of the sun, the overall seating rotation was rotated slightly from the third baseline to reduce potential solar impacts. And as far as some of the logistics, the attendees will check in at the two areas noted by the asterix on this graphic. The, excuse me, and then the displayed seating plan has been developed using three blocks with two primary 14-foot-wide aisles for the circulation to access the microphone. So the yellow on the graphics indicate the transit areas, again, to maintain the social distancing. So with this setup, the moderator will be in the left field looking to the northeast with the, and the, excuse me, the meeting attendees will be looking to the southwest. So non-voters will be sitting in the areas outside the fence, in the bleachers. So non-voters will be sitting in the, um, the areas outside the fence, in the bleacher areas. And to, for, uh, support for getting attendees, uh, help checking in and getting to seats, cert volunteers will be used and they will also be assisting in keeping the, uh, microphone sanitized during the meetings. So working out from, um, the, the seating plan and moving towards the, um, parking and access plan, the vicinity public parking lots include the elementary school lot, so the main lot and the front lot at the elementary school, off Depot Road, the community center, and the Veterans Field and Stage Harbor Road Municipal Parking Lots. So, uh, two of the three drop-off areas, the community center and Veterans Field will have expanded handicap parking capacity that will be marked in the field. Uh, there's an additional drop-off opportunity off of Depot for able-bodied persons. Uh, they'll be able to use the stairs to access the pathways, uh, to the check-in areas. Uh, the Veterans Field restrooms, uh, will be open and there will be three portable toilets deployed off of the Veterans Field parking lot. Um, so with that, again, to provide a quick overview, because there are a lot of details and there might be a lot of questions, but, uh, those are the primary, um, aspects that, that we've reviewed. Uh, and with that, I'll yield to any questions or comments you may have on the seating, parking, or other details.
Thank, thank you Terry. Um, job well done by the team. I don't know if Jill wants to afterward, through discussing, just acknowledge that team and who they were.
There was, um, quite a few people, so definitely the police and fire chiefs, the town clerk, DPW. Terry, of course, has been the, the one who's been putting the logistics together. Our facilities team, DPW team, they've all been out already to mark the field. Uh, we've had, um, conversations with, I think it's Robbie on the field, Steve West, so everyone's on the same page. And really, I have to say, almost every department head participated in this. And, uh, it was a really great, today we did the final logistics planning of it at our department head, uh, meeting, which is also our COVID-19, uh, incident, uh, response team meeting. And I, I think we, we have everything secured. So again, if, if voters are not feeling well, or now that they know and understand there's not going to be any action on a COA project article, there's no reason for them to co-come. Certainly they are, they're welcome to participate, but, uh, we're still under that COVID state of emergency. So we're going to ask voters if they would please to bring their warrants that were mailed to their house. But if they forget, we'll have some extras, uh, to bring a mask. But if they forget also, we'll have some extras, including we'll have, uh, bugs, bug wipes, insect repellent wipes, and, um, hand sanitizing wipes, just to keep everyone, you know, safe and so forth. And, um, two check-in points that Terry had shown, so depending on where you park and, and what's easier for you. And we're just asking for the seats that are closest to those check-in areas to be left for those voters who, um, need some extra help or have some accessibility limitations. Um, other than that, it will look a little different. It will be low-tech. And, uh, with the moderator's remarks about bundling and consent, uh, items, I, I think it will be very efficient. I posted, or will post, the scorecard that is color-coded to show which articles are going to be, um, either postponed indefinitely, that motion, or no motions, so that the voters can follow along if they want. It will be recorded by Channel 18, but we're not able to do a live broadcast unfortunately for this. And no presentation, so I think with the annual town meeting preview show and what we just did today with the moderator, I'm not really sure there'll be any questions, but again, we don't want to restrict or constrict anyone's right to vote. So, um, it'll be very interesting. So that's it for me.
Thank you Jill. Thank you Terry. Um, questions for Terry, Jill, or the moderator? I, uh, see Peter, I mean Dean first, then Peter. Go ahead Dean.
Madam Chair, Terry, could you go back to the blue squares? Cause I'm, I'm not fully comprehending the seating. I think it's, go to the one, the overview of the whole plan with the, the, the yellow, the wide yellow aisles and so forth first.
Right, hold on a second, I need to pull that back up here. Sorry about that.
While Terry's pulling it up, I just want to remind everybody that the seating will all be on the field. So make sure to wear sensible shoes and if there's any change in the weather, just bring those layers and jackets and so forth. But we will be on the field. We will not be in the bleachers.
Will be using those metal chairs that we use in the gymnasium?
Yes.
And masks are mandatory?
Uh, we are encouraging people to wear masks only because they'll be passing by and certainly when checking in, uh, to have those on. So I, I would like to say that they are required, but we are outdoors and there is social distancing. And we'll have some paper mask available in case people forget it. How you doing Terry?
You got?
I, I am, I am, I have it up here, so let me just get back to sharing. I apologize for that.
Sure.
Hit, hit a wrong button here, so I will share this back and pull it up. Okay, um, and then can everybody hear me?
Mm hmm. We don't see, we're not seeing the.
So Dean, if, uh, uh, I understand your question, so in each of these blue, um, squares, there are, are two, two seats?
We're not seeing, we're not seeing the chair.
Okay.
Terry, Terry, we're not seeing the chair, so, um, let's give it one more try.
Yeah, let me try that again and I, I apologize because it's, there we go.
Okay.
All right, you see my desktop now, but not the plans. Let me pull that up.
All right. So what I'm asking, I'm looking at this, oops, it's gone. These, uh, where, where, where you have these little blue squares.
Yep.
Right, and the yellow, the yellow, um, perpendicular lines, those are, those are separations, right? Between the rows of chairs?
Correct.
And you could, you can walk those. How wide are those?
Those are eight foot. So those, I, I kind of characterize as secondary. So, and then the primary, uh, in the, the thicker yellow are proportional, and those are 14 foot wide. And again, to maximize, this minimize, maximize to achieve the social distancing, but still keep it. I don't want to call it compact footprint because it's quite, quite expansive, but as compact as possible.
And, and the blue squares, so each little blue square is what?
Represents two, uh, there, those are that, that double seat configuration. So there are two chairs in each of those blue, uh, blue squares.
Are they side by side or are they diagonally separate?
They are, they are side by side. So the orientation, um, again, towards the moderator, uh, looking to the southwest. So all the, all the chairs would be side by side, uh, facing the, the southwest. So towards the, um, you know, the podium setup of the moderator.
Okay. So a, a couple could sit side by side.
Correct.
Uh, and, and the next square to them is how far apart from?
There's, there would be the six foot separation to the next, the next, uh, grouping of chairs. And obviously if, if they're occupied by one person, it would be, you know, more than that. But the, the intent is to maintain the six foot separation.
Okay.
And again, as you mentioned, the, the transit, both behind and in front, um, and around, quite frankly, the blocks as well.
So, and I'm now looking at toward the moderator. So he's, he's at, on a, on a platform with a podium. And the town, town manager is next to him. The chair of the Board of Selectmen is next to the town manager. And on the other side of the moderator is the finance chair. So where, where, now where is the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee? Now are they separated? Are we separated by six feet?
Correct. Yeah. So you'll be six feet, you'll be separated. Uh, and again, that'll be a row of 15 chairs, uh, because it'll also include the, um, um, Finance Director and Town Council. So that is kind of outside of the, um, you know, the, the attendees. Uh, and then they, they'll, this other blue, solid blue row would be 15 chairs set six feet apart with distancing, proper distancing, both behind and in front of you as well.
And it looks like we're eight feet away from the first row of chairs, or maybe, maybe 10 feet.
Yeah. So wait, yeah, right. We would have the, that same eight, eight foot. Again, we'd make sure that there's, that, that separation is, is, uh, consistent with everyone else.
My, my, my compliments to everyone that worked on it. It looks masterful to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Dean. Um, Peter, you had some questions then Jeff?
Yeah, mine is not really a question. I, I, you may have remembered, I was a little skeptical how you were going to do this, especially on a plan that, that has to deal with being outside and making sure we had social distancing. I just wanted to give you kudos. Uh, you know, as any plan goes, it's how you execute it. But you, you've given yourself a lot of options. If something happens, uh, there's plenty of room to move around and, uh, thanks.
Okay, great. Um, uh, Jeff, did you have questions? Your hand was up. Jeff, you're muted.
Yeah, I just had a little trouble with the digits on the unmute button. Um, good job. I just wanted to say, great job. Looks great. Um, I was a little concerned about the handicap access. Um, looks as though you've addressed that. And I just think it's a, it's a good plan and it'll be a historic event. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much, everybody that worked on it. Thank you.
Great. Um, thanks. Uh, Cory, did you have your hand up? Um, I can't see you right now because of the presentation, so I was just checking in.
Uh, no, I mean, no, no hand up. I'll, I'll echo the compliment to the group putting this together. It will be a historic event. Um, we should get a drone up and get a nice picture of this.
I agree. Yes. Uh, good, good idea. Um, all right. So I'm just going to reach out to the, uh, remote participants. I'll take a, a roll of anybody who'd like to speak on this matter, uh, ask a question. Um, anybody in the public?
I think I'm the only one out here, but Elaine Gibbs, I just have one quick question.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead Elaine.
I was just looking out my window and it's 6:4, 6:50 right now in terms of the sunset. I just wanted to, it's a dumb question, but in terms of the orientation of the seating, because based on the sun, are people going to be looking into the sun? Or did you take that into consideration so that they can see the podium and what's going on?
Uh, Terry, can you respond?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to, I don't know if I need to raise my hand or not, but, uh, yes. So, uh, uh, so we, one of the original configurations, so, so the, the short answer is yes. That was factored into, um, the, the calculation. So working with Channel 18, they actually, uh, looked at the path of the sun over the, um, the, um, the field at that point in time. Um, and if you're familiar with the, uh, basically the, the sun would be almost due west. So that's why we, we have the, the, the twist in that so that, um, some of our earlier configurations or orientations actually had, uh, attendees looking directly into the sun. So, so we, we've, we've twisted that, um, or, you know, or rotated the orientation, um, again, to get it off the direct access to, um, to, to avoid that situation, um, as, as much as possible.
Thank you Terry. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question from the remote participants? All right, hearing none. Thank you. Wow. That's an amazing job. Well done. Really appreciate the hard work that the, um, the team did and we'll see, um, we'll, expectations of town meeting will be an interesting one this year. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, I think, and again, just to also, uh, Jill, not that she neglect, but just, uh, natural resource and also, um, Channel 18, very critical in all, all aspects, many, many aspects of the, 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 the development of the plan and obviously the moderator.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, um, thank you Terry. Thank you Bill. Thank you Jill. Okay, moving on to, uh, the item two, a COVID-19 Financial Management Planning, uh, 1/12 Budget Plan for Fiscal Year 2021. Uh, Finance Director, Halela, Alex, hi, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening. Uh, yes, um, in advance of town meeting and in case something, um, should happen and town meeting does not go forward on Monday as planned, uh, the town needs to have a 1/12 budget, um, in effect so we can operate. Should town meeting not be held, or the budget doesn't achieve, um, the necessary votes to pass at the annual town meeting. Um, if we do not have an operating budget or a 1/12 budget in effect on July 1st, uh, the town can't spend any money. Um, so this is more or less, um, a contingency plan, um, in case it's a downpour of rain for the next, you know, June 22nd through June 30th, uh, basically, or something should happen that we cannot hold town meeting. Um, so what we did was that we looked through, um, the FY 2020 budget and, um, that's what the 1/12 budget is based on, is the FY 2020 budget. And it must be at least 1/12 of that budget. Um, it won't be exactly 1/12 because we do have certain items that are prepaid, such as our Barnstable County Retirement, some of our insurances. Um, so we're able to pay those upfront and get those prepayment discounts, um, that we get by paying those on July 1st. So I presented the 1/12 budget, um, to the board and you, I put some of the comments on the sides, uh, on the synopsis of the, um, operating budgets. Of note, you might see that there's no, um, amount for the educational budgets because our first assessments, um, don't hit until August. So again, if we can't have a town meeting before the end of July, if we have to move in this for, this way, then we'll have to adopt another budget for the month of August. So it's a month-to-month budget. Again, worst-case scenario, we're hoping that, um, you know, we get through town meeting on Monday and everything passes, but we need to submit this to the Department of Revenue, um, as a fallback, should we not be able to have town meeting and the budget doesn't pass. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, again, the Department of Revenue has, uh, advised us to submit this sooner rather than later, as they expect a lot of requests to be coming in at the end of the month. And, um, it might take them two to three days to turn this around.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jeff, you have your hand up.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move to approve the town manager's FY 2021 1/12 Budget Plan for Submittal to the Department of Revenue per Section 5 of an Act to Address Challenges Faced by Municipalities and State Authorities Resulting from COVID-19, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Peter, second. Any, uh, further discussion from the Board of Selectmen? Hearing none. I'll, uh, ask the remote participants, any questions for, on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I will take a roll, call, vote for the Board of Selectmen. Selectman Kokolos.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Matters.
Aye.
Selectman, uh, Dinkins.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, we pass.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to support the town manager's request to the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Director of Accounts for Emergency Expenditures Related to COVID-19 under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Any, uh, Peter?
Just a comment, if I'm correct, right, the email showed that the, uh, the, the state approved that, supported it.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments from, or questions from the board? Any remote participants' questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a roll of the, uh, board. Uh, Selectman, uh, Kokolos.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Matters.
Aye.
Selectman Dinkins.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, that passed. Thank you very much.
Thanks Alex.
Thank you.
Done.
Okay, next order of business is, oh, we're going to the next page. Uh, Downtown Main Street Modifications Working Group Recommendations. Um, and this is being presented by the Director of Community Development, Donovan. Katie, are you on our call?
Yes, I am. I'm here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, just before I start the, uh, presentation, I'd like to share my screen. I can bring up a graphic, um, that will be beneficial. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes. Yes.
Great. All right. So as you'll recall, at your May 27th, 2020 meeting, you requested that the town manager convene a working group to explore the, explore changes to the downtown Main Street area in response to a request by the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association. Their original request included potential changes to traffic and pedestrian flow, including making Main Street one-way. Just to preface, um, the recommendation of the working group is that there be no change to traffic or pedestrian flow. Um, the, the town manager and I quickly got to work, um, and the town manager put together a working group and I'd like, just like to go. and I'd just like to go through the names of the people that participated. So in addition to the town manager and myself, we had Sean Anneely, Police Chief Mark Paulina, Fire Chief David Depesquale, Tom Temple, DPW Director, Judy Giorgio, Health Agent, Sarah Clark, HBDC Staff Liaison, Dean Castro as the Board of Selectmen representative, Bob Wirtschafter as the Planning Board Representative, DeeDee Holt as a resident, Neighborhood Resident Representative, Susan Dimm from Barnhill Pottery and the Merchants President, Mary Kavanaugh from the Chamber, Heather McGrath from Simpler Pleasures, Becky Vogel from Mahi Gold, Shane Coughlin from the Wayside Inn, Steve Wardell for Forest Beach Design, Scott Hamilton from Chatham Jewelers, and Janice Rogers from Chatham Living by the Sea. So the working group held four remote meetings through Microsoft Teams and we conducted one-site visit. Through conversations during the meetings and at the site visit, the group agreed that there would be no change to traffic and pedestrian flow as stated earlier. Instead, the working group is recommended, is recommending changes to some of the on-street parking along Main Street. There are three areas that are being recommended for no parking. These include areas, as you can see on the screen in red, on two areas along, on either side of Bierce's Byway, and then for two parking spaces in front of the Chamber booths. Let's see. So according to a 2015 parking space survey, there are 133 parking spaces along Main Street. And through the reduction, though the reduction of four spaces is of some concern, the group felt that the high pedestrian congregation warranted the temporary repurposing of these spaces to promote better social distancing. Additionally, there are five areas totaling 14 spaces that would be designated for curbside pickup. These spaces are depicted in blue on the map. And these spaces will allow for frequent turnover in those designated areas. They will be designated by yellow paint and a hatch pattern and identified with signage, which I will also bring up onto the screen. The working group within, with making this recommendation is also proposing to meet throughout the summer to potentially, if, to continue to review these changes and to make any further recommendations to the Board as necessary. So if you'll just, give me just one second, I'm just gonna stop sharing that screen and bring up a sign. Let's see. Can you see this sign here?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be the, the sign, so it would be for 10-minute standing, curbside delivery, and to-go pickup only with a fine, as we would need a fine in order for the police department to be able to enforce. So there are, along with me here tonight, I think there are a number of members of the working group on the call. And so I think that that is our recommendation at this point in time, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Katie. I'm going to see if Dean has any comments as he was on the working group. I want to thank you for your time, Dean, participating in that. And then I see Corey has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was actually quite enjoyable and we had a site walk. And it was the first opportunity I've had to get together with a group larger than one or two people in the last five months. We were all socially distanced and masked. I, I want to point out, I'm not just a selectman, I'm also a neighbor as well, so I have some understanding of how the side streets get impacted. I think almost from the beginning, the sense of the working group was, especially once we got out onto the street, that trying to convert Main Street to one lane or two lanes of traffic in one direction or to redirect the pedestrians was really not particularly workable. The idea was to identify various locations which are what we refer to as choke points, which are indicated by the, those areas where parking spaces have been repurposed. And those are largely locations where the sidewalk is pretty narrow and where people tend to congregate. So the thinking was that there might, I, I think, maybe, Katie, you can correct me, in addition to the curbside and, and, and drop-off and delivery, a pedestrian who wants to avoid a group of people could step out into the, that parking space and then get back onto the sidewalk, just kind of circle around them. But I think it's a good compromise and we're gonna continue to refine things if this is the way we go. But thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dean. Corey, you had your hand up as well?
Yes, please. First of all, I should probably make a disclosure that, as many of you know, I am, I am a downtown merchant. I've been a downtown merchant for 20 years, so I'm, I'm gonna still obviously participate. I, I think I have a bird's eye view of what's been going on down there. I'd like to thank the group very much for putting the time and effort into putting this plan together. Agree or don't agree with what they're gonna propose, you know, we can flush that out, but it's, it's, you know, I appreciate their time. I also appreciate the fact that they're going to be meeting, moving forward to kind of assess what was working or not working and, and have this evolve and review it as, as it progresses. I appreciate that. There are two observations, or one's a question and one's kind of an observation. My, my first question is appears that the, these blue hash mark, or blue marked, you know, loading, unloading zones, four, four of the five look to be like more like, I would call it restaurants or something like that, one retail. And it looks, for the most part, with the exception of the one over by Library Lane, are from Cross Street down toward like Chatterbars Ave. Was there any consideration of, of any of the restaurants from, say, Cross Street down to the Rotary? I mean, you've got the Carmine's Pizza, Orpheum, what used to be Sandy Steiner, Public Cafe. Any consideration in, with the group about having a need for any of these type of, you know, loading, unloading zones in any part of that stretch? And then, do you want me to ask my second question or address that?
Why don't we address that one first? Katie, do you have any feedback on?
Sure, and actually, I may ask Mary from the Chamber, she may want to jump, jump in as well, but we did, we did consider that. And then, in looking at the areas around those businesses, it was, there were areas of, near Carmine's is an area that you can pull off, and then there's the area of parking directly behind Sandy's. So the group did discuss those areas, but didn't, didn't feel that it was necessary at this point in time. Again, this is why we're gonna continue to, to meet, and if there are, you know, problems that people could reach out to us and request that we take a look at additional areas.
Okay, no, fair enough. I mean, parking, parking spaces are at a premium in downtown, so I just want to put that on the table for consideration, and I'm very satisfied with the answer. The second comment I would like to make is, if I understand the, the red no-parking location, specifically the one to the right and left of Bierce's Byway. You currently have, and I can't remember how long ago, the little yellow hash marks to the right and left that were put in there to allow for a little better sightlines that are currently in place. Now, I, I've been across the street up at Seaview Street for, if I say 20 years. The entrance to Bierce's Byway is narrow. There's a big white bollard next to one of the buildings. The delivery trucks back in, throw the beepers on, so if, if I'm understanding the proposal, and, and if I'm not, please clarify, I'm not necessarily sure that's the best place to have even social distancing pedestrians because it's kind of a dicey area for cars to come in and out. So if I'm, like, again, if I'm understanding it, I don't know if that is the best place to have people, pedestrians, being on the concrete, asphalt, whatever, because it is a dicey area for, for vehicles to maneuver that area. So that is my, my opinion. I, I, you know, obviously, if you move forward with it, I'd want that watched very, very closely because, you know, that area is, is a dicey, and frankly, across the street in front of my place, people forget Seaview Street is a road, and they sit and stand and they don't watch for vehicles sometimes. So I just want to put extra special caution that we keep an eye on pedestrian safety, but that is gonna be critical this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Katie, is there any comment on that placement?
Sure, yeah, so we did, part of the, the reason that we looked to put no parking in that area is basically because of the site distancing, and because the sidewalk is so narrow in that area for this one parking spot that I'm hovering over here, that the sidewalk is so narrow that the idea was that, you know, if, if it were, it may, it may be better for somebody to be able to just step out into the street, not necessarily to create a pedestrian lane, but just to be able to give additional space for somebody to be able to get around folks that may be congregating on the sidewalk. And so, again, the, the smaller space on the other side of Bierce's Byway, that has to do more with site, site distance issues. And so that was decided by the group that that's why we would propose no parking in those areas. But we're not proposing, again, we're not proposing a pedestrian lane or anything of those sorts. It was just to allow that people could step out if need be to be able to socially distance.
Great, thank you. I don't know if I see anybody else's hand up. Jeff, did you have any questions, or Peter, I can't?
Yeah, I actually have my hand up, but it maybe didn't function, but, yeah, um, can you just, just clearly delineate in front of what businesses the unloading curbside pickup is in front of?
Sure. Okay, so we'll start down at the end by Seaview Street. So there's three spaces proposed in front of the area around the Captain's Table. Moving further up Main Street, there is, in front of Chatham Cookware and Chatham Jewelers, there's three, three spaces proposed there. We're proposing three spaces in front of Bluefin, three spaces in front of the Squire area, and then two spaces over in front of the Candy Manor and, in, in that area along Main Street right there.
Yeah, it's just kind of hard to tell from the, I mean, I, I could discern or kind of figure it out, but, um, I agree with Corey on Bierce's Byway, by the way, it's really tight in there. I'm, I'm, and I'm a little underwhelmed by this plan. I'm kind of surprised by it, to be honest with you. I was ginned up by the initial presentation by the Chamber and by Heather and, and others about taking a different kind of look at Main Street as a, as a one-way, very pedestrian-friendly yet safe venue. I'm probably gonna support it, but again, I'm a little underwhelmed. I thought we'd get a little bit more creativity, a little more energy around doing something a little different downtown and demarcating some parking spaces and some unloading areas is, doesn't quite get me there. I'm gonna support it, but I would be interested to see how the group progresses in the summer and how, how this plays out in terms of how we keep socially distant during the course of the summer. And I would hope that we will be adjusted if it doesn't go well. Anyway, those are my initial comments.
Thank you.
I, I was, I was frankly excited by some of the, some of the planning done early on in this effort, and maybe we'll end up there, maybe we won't. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Peter, did you have any comments?
Most, Corey mentioned one or two of them, but I do have one comment, and it may be a little bit different than Jeff's only because of some things I've read lately. I, I too, at first thought, you know, hey, they, 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 the businesses did some, some good, I thought, planning on how they thought things should move with being one, you know, going down and have it one-way certain areas, although the, the, the Police Chief and the Fire Chief came back with another, a lot, a number of, of concerns which you had to agree to. I don't know if you noticed, but in the last, over the weekend and before that, I know a province town and another, one of the other towns, maybe not exactly on a Cape, was doing exactly what they, we were, they were saying we wanted to do here, have one-way parking, be able to bring chairs out closer to the, either chairs or have walking along the road. And a number of people were considerable, but a pushback saying, we don't feel safe doing that. We have a problem with not ha, with having just a line between us and cars. So, you know, when I, when I looked at this over the weekend, I said, I think this is a good compromise, so I, I, I'll support it.
Thank you, Peter. I do agree that it's a good compromise at this point. We did hear from a few businesses that were opposed to a walking downtown-only scenario, so, or a one-way, rather, scenario. But maybe we'll, we'll get some more feedback from the businesses as time goes on. It, am I hearing a motion to, to recommend this temporary changes to the parking spaces? Is anybody ready to make a recommendation? And then we can ask the remote participants. I can't see anything because Katie still has the presentation.
Madam Chair, it's Dean.
Yeah.
I just, I'll, I'll offer a motion, but I just wanted to say, to try to respond to the point that Jeff was raising about the plan being not as ambitious as was originally suggested. In addition to the concerns expressed by the Police Chief and the Fire Chief and the DPW Director, the sentiment to not go that far was voiced within the, the, the community of the, the businesses. And I think one concern in particular was that, that most of us felt, if you did that, if you had it one-way, as opposed to a complete shutdown, it would severely impact the, the traffic, the circulation of traffic around Main Street. You know, Seaview, Chatterbars Avenue, even lower Main Street. Where are, where are people gonna turn around and so forth? So I think we wanted to avoid that and try to keep this as simple as possible for people to understand.
Okay, thank you.
I'll offer the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to support the recommendation of the Downtown Main Street Modifications Working Group to temporarily eliminate the identified four parking spaces and to provide five locations, 14 spaces for curbside pickup as identified on the attached map.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion from the Board? All right, any, anybody from the audience want to speak to this matter? Please call out your name. I'm hearing none at this moment.
Elaine Gibbs just, I think, voiced.
Yeah, Elaine Gibbs.
Anybody else? Okay, Elaine.
Yes, I had a, a quick question. Is the pickup only for restaurant food? Are all the stores going to be taking orders for people to pick up items?
Madam Chair, this is Katie, and I may have a member, maybe Mary or Susan from the Chamber, the merchants can, can speak to this as well, but no, the intent is for that it would all, all of the businesses would be able to utilize those spaces. They're not specific to each of the restaurants that they're near. It's just a matter of, that was the best, they were the best locations to be able to provide the curbside pickup. And so I would, I would defer to Mary perhaps, or Susan, if they'd like to comment further on the sentiment of the businesses.
Thank you, Katie. Mary, are you on and do you have, or Susan, anybody want to share the sentiments?
It's Susan, yeah. It's also, not just for the restaurants, it's for any kind of business that is doing curbside, like Candy Manor or any business, but it was also a point where you can also pull over and let your mother out so that she could go into the store and you could go around and park, and then, you know, for that kind of thing. So it's for real short-term parking, live parking.
If I just ask my question then, or make a comment, I have concerns about the, the number of spaces then and what's going to happen if we're allowing traffic down Main Street, which I think we should do because I don't think one way, I think people, it would just aggravate drivers. But if every store is gonna allow pickup and then everybody can sit in those parking spaces for up to 10 minutes, I think you're gonna start having traffic, major traffic jams, people are gonna start live parking on Main Street if they want to pick up their food and they know that they can't get it without, you know, doing a, a U-turn somewhere. So I think that's gonna be a problem down the road, and is there gonna be a police presence on Main Street to make sure that people aren't leaving their cars? You know, if they're walking down the street without masks, I can see people, you know, parking their cars and walking away. And then the stores are gonna have all these orders backed up for pickup, and people aren't gonna be able to pick them up. I don't want to be a Negative Nelly on this. I, I, it's a horrible situation for all the businesses, but that is a concern, unless there's a police presence to make sure that people are not, you know, parking there and that they're moving along.
Jill, I have a question for you in relationship to police presence on Main Street. Is that going to be increased this summer at all, or are we calling on ambassadors to? Do we have a plan, action plan on that yet?
Yeah, so the plan would be for a police officer on the bicycle in a presence. What I'm seeing in the news with other communities is that having an ambassador to try to enforce something is, it takes a skilled person with conflict resolution and how to it takes a skilled person with conflict resolution and how to tactfully do it. So we're going to do a police presence instead of having downtown ambassadors on Main Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from the remote participants? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to take a roll vote on the matter. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, so the motion passed. Okay. So we're going to hear back from, on occasion, if there's any issues from the working group. And I appreciate all the work that everybody did, the committee and Katie as well. So thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to remind folks to mute their mics and mute their videos unless they're presenting or asking a question. So, moving on to the next matter of business, which is consider temporary outdoor seating requests. We have three restaurants tonight. Red Nun Bar and Grill, Chatham Squire, and Hanger B. Eatery. So Katie or Shawna, one of you making the presentation for the Red Nun? And welcome, Mike Giorgio. I see that you're on the call as well. Katie, are you making a presentation of this? Or is Shawna?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I apologize. I was trying to pull the application up on my screen, but it appears that I wasn't able to do so. So we did get, and I can ask Shawna if she would mind pulling up the plan for the Red Nun. So we did get a request from the Red Nun. Our working group met virtually through Teams to review. And at this point in time, the team recommends approval of the proposal to add temporary outdoor seating in the parking area adjacent to the building, provided that the parking lot entrance be protected with a barrier between the roadway and the dining area. And that that barrier is of appropriate materials and dimensions. And that the high-top tables located on the deck and any previously approved outdoor dining shall meet the outdoor dining policy and guidelines as approved by this board on June 9, 2020. If you can see the plan Shawna has up on the screen, there are tables proposed in their outdoor area. The team did, as I said, they felt that this was an appropriate area to propose the outdoor dining.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does Mike have anything you'd like to add? Or say? Mike?
Yes. I'm wondering, and maybe I could do this offline, but the parking barriers, if they could be a little more specific as to what they want those to be made out of, or the materials and dimensions or not. Maybe I could do that with Katie offline.
Yes, absolutely. And what we're asking folks is to work with us, typically some sort of a planter or some other barrier that you could propose to us and that the team would then determine whether or not it was appropriate. But we can certainly work offline to get that accomplished.
Okay. And any questions from the board for Katie? Or does somebody want to make a motion? I see Dean's waving his hand. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. The application on the basic information page, a couple of lines that are blank, the hours of operation should be filled in. And I think we need Mike's signature and the date. But I just had one question for, I guess, Jill or whatever. Is there any impact on the 22nd of June associated with Veterans Field if this goes into play?
So Mr. Giorgio and I have had a couple of conversations, one as recent as today. So he is aware of it because we will be using the parking lots and the one-way drop-off. So Mike, if you can confirm that you're aware of it and you're going to make some other adjustments for staff parking?
Yeah, we're ready for it. I've spoken to the staff. And so, yeah, we're very prepared for it. So.
Okay. Cory, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. One really minor question. Where's the location of the dumpster on this plan? Has it been moved or is it still in the same location?
It's in the same location.
Okay. Humor me on this comment. This just jogs my memory. I remember serving on the planning board. One of our members, Richard Gulick, I remember you coming before us. You might want to talk with Katie. There might be a small bond still sitting in there for screening for that dumpster that was placed many, many moons ago. So you may want to talk to Katie about a possible bond that's sitting there that might allow you to screen the dumpster. If you're going to put the seating out there, that might be a win-win for everybody. So just food for thought. It just jogged my memory when I saw the plan. So, but I wish you the best of luck.
Okay, Cory, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I wish Mr. Giorgio luck as well. It looks like a good plan. And the only question I had was, are planters really appropriate to like try to stop traffic? Or are we trying to prevent anybody from driving into that area? I would think something more substantial would be appropriate. We don't need to get into it here, but that's, I think that maybe something a little bit more appropriate or stronger than a planter ought to be out there. But anyway, Madam Chair, if I could, I move to approve the proposal from the Red Nun, approving final approval, pending final approval, I should say, or it should say, by the inspection team of the materials and dimensions of the barrier between the roadway and the dining area. The high-top tables located on the deck and any previously approved outdoor dining shall meet the outdoor dining policy and guidelines approved by the Board of Selectmen on June 9, 2020.
Do I have a second on that? I hear Dean. Any further discussion from the board? Any questions from the remote participants? Hearing none, I'll take a roll vote. Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter? I need a verbal, Peter. You have to unmute yourself.
There it is. No, I know. It wasn't going. Thank you. Yeah.
Aye. Okay. And the chair says aye. The motion is approved. Good luck, Mike. We wish you well. The next restaurant up is Chatham Squire. They're outdoor dining. Todd Hurl is the owner and he has submitted a proposal to the internal team. Katie, do you want to give us an overview of this?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Squire is actually proposing to have outdoor dining in the parking lot behind the restaurant. So as you'll see on the plan that's up on the screen, there's a number of tables and the fencing is actually in place and has been reviewed by, I believe, all Jay Briggs, Rich Chevry, our fire inspector, as well as Judy Giorgio. And so concerns were raised during the initial review of the proposal. However, upon inspection, the applicant noted that the requested changes would be made. We already had some concerns about a couple of the tables being too close to the traveled way. And so the applicant is proposing to work with the team to provide just a different reconfiguration of the plan. So the team recommends approval of the proposal to add temporary outdoor seating in the parking area adjacent to the existing building, provided that the barrier between the traveled way and the dining area is of appropriate materials and dimensions. And with the stipulation that the mobile bar that is onsite currently will not be utilized onsite at any time. The Chatham Police Department has indicated that they will conduct periodic monitoring to make sure of that. And that, my understanding is, I'm not sure if Mr. Hurl is on the call, but the the idea is that that's actually more of an advertising for something that they would do off-site, the mobile bar that they have. It is part of the outdoor dining policy and regulations that this board adopted, that there be no outdoor or no temporary bar service located in the outdoor dining areas.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Because I can't see you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dean. And then Jeff. And then Cory.
Katie, did I read in the material that this had to go before the planning board? And if that was correct, why does it? Yeah, there's an application for site plan approval. Is that, is it that we're just using that form or is this going to the planning board?
Through the chair. So the applicant had actually applied to the planning board before this process was in place. And so we utilized the information that they had provided to the planning board for our review process.
So is that a moot topic at this point for the planning board?
It is, yes. They do not need planning board approval.
Yeah. I know that the applicant had contacted me on a couple of occasions. He's been anxious to move ahead with this and he's using parking spaces that he owns. So I have no problem with this. And I'll throw a motion to the table. I know Peter wants to ask a question after a minute. I move to approve the proposal from the Chatham Squire pending submission of the revised plan and approval by the inspection team of the materials and dimensions of the barrier between the roadway and dining area. And with the stipulation that the mobile bar will not, as underlined, be utilized on-site at any time.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And Peter. All right. Cory had his hand up, Jeff, and then and then Peter if he needs to weigh in. Cory?
Thank you very much. No, I went out there this morning, kind of just took a peek around. Bob Varney, who was an employee of the Squire, kind of gave me the tour, what they're doing. You know, the scaled back proposal from, I guess, what they might have thought of originally seems to be reasonable. I mean, everyone's trying to survive this pandemic. So I think it's a legitimate effort on their part. It kind of falls in line with what's going on with the Blue Coral operating hours and what have you. So it kind of does fit in with normal operations in that area. The only thing that I don't think was mentioned, and I don't know if I necessarily want to say it's a condition because talking with Mr. Varney, it is their intention of doing this, is I would just recommend that they delineate a kind of an aisle or area for anyone waiting outside that fenced area, whether it be cones or whatever, as a, you know, for people queuing to come into the fenced-in area. I know that's their intention of doing it. I just want to make sure, probably from a safety perspective, that is in the case. But I think it's a reasonable request and I am going to support it.
Thanks, Cory. Jeff, you had a question?
I do have a couple of questions. I was just confused by the difference between seating capacity and occupancy number. The seating capacity looks like four per picnic table at 48, but the occupancy is listed as 100. So I just don't know how you square those two. That's my first question. And then Katie might have already addressed this, but the picnic tables, like especially, and I wasn't there. I did not tour the site, you guys. But it looks like picnic tables nine and 10 and six and 12 are pretty darn close to each other. I don't know. Are we being socially distant? And then the only, the third question I had is just with traffic running by there to park and stuff. I just concerned about safety. I noticed that the 400 East had pretty decent jersey barriers out there with their tents there. They put seating outside. So I don't know. I'm nudgy about safety in terms of vehicles going by. That's all. So I have three. Occupancy versus seating, the closeness of the picnic tables, and the safety of traffic.
Katie, or maybe perhaps the applicants are on that they could speak to this as well?
Madam Chair, I'll begin. And if the applicants would like to jump in. So we did have a concern about the occupancy versus the, you know, the number of seating. And we will, it is our intention that we will issue a temporary occupancy for these areas. So it will be noted on that, on the temporary occupancy. I don't know that, again, the applicant had started this process before the temporary guidelines were adopted by this board. And so the, there is in that policy that you, we can't have areas of congregating within these outdoor dining areas. And so the intent of, you know, having perhaps 100 people in that area, even though they may not be sitting, is something that would not be allowed at this point in time. And so where we would be basing the occupancy on the number of seats in that area.
Okay, that's good.
So the barrier, the, I will say that the fire inspector and the building commissioner have been out to the to the site to view the barrier and they were both comfortable with the materials that were put together. And so just based on the travel path in that area, they felt that the materials were sufficient. However, they will do a final inspection. And if there's any other requirements, they will make the applicant aware at that time. And I apologize, Selectmen Dykens, I know you had a third question, but I.
No, you, those are all three questions. The picnic tables are very close to each other, at least on the schematic. That was my third question. So nine and 10 and 12 and six are like, even four and five are pretty close together. But I'm sure you guys are going to take a look right before they open it up, I would assume?
Yes, that's correct. Again, it would be, there's a final inspection and a temporary occupancy that will be issued.
Yeah, my major concern was, you know, maximum capacity, 100. I mean, I've been behind the Squire a number of times in my life and I can imagine 100 behind the Squire. Anyway. Thank you. I'll be supportive, but I'm hoping that the town stays close because that's a very, very popular spot.
It is, certainly. Cory, did you have anything?
Yeah, no, just to go back to joining Jeff's concerns, but I went back there. I didn't know what to envision. But the rear parking lot, I felt very comfortable with the fencing that's in place now. And if they delineate a queuing line for customers going in, I don't see any issue with a vehicle entering in that rear parking lot, navigating like they normally would or traversing that back lot that is directly behind the Squire. I really don't see many concerns in the way they've configured it onsite. So I recognize your concern, but actually going out there this morning, it was definitely dismissed from my perspective.
Okay, thank you, Cory.
Great. Thanks, Cory. Is Mr. Hurl or Mr. Sullivan on the call? Would they like to make any comments on the application before we go to the remote participants? Okay. Okay. Anybody, any remote participants want to speak to this matter? All right, hearing none, I'm going to.
Madam Chair, it's the fire chief.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Chief Kessquali.
Yeah, I went out there yesterday and our concern was where they had the tables originally in the plan. And they alleviated our concerns. And I think the plan that they have works safely. All three people tonight have done as much as they can to alleviate the concerns that we as the fire department had. So, you know, kudos to them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other remote participants want to weigh in on this matter? Okay, hearing none, I'll pull the group for approval. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, good luck to the Squire for the summer season. Thank you, Katie, on that. And so our next applicant is considered temporary outdoor dining request from Hanger B. Tracy Shields, the owner, has submitted a proposal for temporary outdoor dining adjacent to her restaurant. So Katie, you want to give us a little rundown on this one as well?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see from the graphic that Shawna has up on the screen, Hanger B., actually, as you all may know, this area is already existing and that there are already some picnic tables out there. And so the review team was very comfortable with this proposal. And the team recommends approval as submitted.
Great. Any questions or motion from the Board of Selectmen? I have, see Cory's hand up, Dean, then Jeff. Cory?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Only one quick question. I know this is a popular spot. You know, it's been very successful. You know, you got another plan, trying to figure out a way to survive. What is the plan for, I guess, for lack of a term, like a waiting area? Is there going to be recommendations for people to stay in the parking lot if they're going to be waiting for a table? Are they outside this fenced area? What is the plan for queuing people, waiting for people waiting to be seated?
Katie, do you want to speak to that? Or maybe Tracy does?
I think Tracy's on the call. I think it's better to have her answer.
Hi, Tracy, can you speak to this?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Good question, Cory. And our plan is to have a sign as people enter the airport gate itself, asking for them to send only one person from their party to check in with our host. Entering the grassy area, the fenced-in areas is entering the dining room. And so parties won't be allowed to come in there until they have been invited to do so. And so parties won't be allowed to come in there until they have been invited to do so, to sit. So we will be taking their phone numbers and asking them to either go back to, depending on where they parked, go back to their car, or, you know, run an errand, or also, or hang out in the parking lot by like the snow removal building so that people can sort of stand out there and perhaps we can, you know, send them with a coffee out there or whatnot, and then we'll call and text them. And I'll have a staff person outside of the fence with a walkie-talkie letting, that will be let known when, you know, we're ready for such and such party and then find them.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, did that satisfy your question, or did you have another one?
No, I just wanted to note that it's town property, but we're being indemnified. We're listed as insured on their certificate of insurance. So I think that's very important for the folks to know. Excuse me, they have parking, I mean picnic tables out there now, and I think it's a perfect application and I'm certainly going to support it. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the Board of Selectmen? Dean, I see you waving furiously.
Just a minor point. I noticed that, this is well documented. I appreciate it, Tracy. The letter from the airport granting permission is signed by, it's in the name of both the Chair of the Airport Commission, Peter Donovan, and the manager, Tim Howard, but it's signed only by Tim. Is Peter on board with this?
Yes, and that was my, I emailed the wrong copy to Katie, but I have Peter's signed version.
Okay. We'll probably get that in the file. Thank you very much.
Great. Corey, you have another question? Okay. All right, any other questions from the remote participants? Okay, do we have a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the proposal from the Hangar B, approving final approval by the inspection team. Any previously approved outdoor dining shall conform to the outdoor dining policy and guidelines approved by this board on June 9, 2020.
Second?
I think that's pending final approval.
Pending final.
Second, okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the remote participants? Hearing none, I'll take a roll. Dean?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
And the chair says aye. Motion's approved. Good luck, Hangar B. All right, moving on, our next item of business is Consider Art in the Park. Kate Gould-Park, Chatham Merchants Association. And I'm just wondering who's going to make that presentation?
Shereen, it's Susan. I am.
Hi, Susan. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. You ready?
Yes, I am. Go right ahead.
Okay, good evening. As you know, every year the Chatham Merchants Association installs art in the park. Obviously, this year is not your normal year. So what we propose to do is install the whales with social distancing in mind. So there would be 10 whales closely lined up behind the fence, on the Main Street fence. The remainder would be in pods of four to five, and they would be 12 feet apart, and they would be away from the sidewalk so that we wouldn't be blocking any of the sidewalk traffic. There will be four pods on each side of the park, and we would have signage at the beginning and the entrances to remind people about social distancing. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. And what's the dates? It's July 3 through August 21st?
Yes.
2020, okay. All right. And any questions for Susan from the board? Peter?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
And then Corey.
Susan, just quickly, as you, as you go walk down the sidewalk in the park, you have these, you call them, I think, pods that are five feet, so forth. You said you're going to have signage. I guess there's, is there going to be signage that says, hey, watch out, be careful, or you can't come so far, or just watch out for social distancing as you?
Yeah, there'll be signs at both the entrances of the park about social distancing. And then the pods are far enough back and far enough away from each other that people won't be, you know, on top of each other looking at them.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of not like the pumpkins in the park.
No, no, and we're not going down the pathway. We'll be further in the park.
I got you. Okay, I see. Yeah.
Corey, you had a question?
No, well, I mean, again, disclosure, I'm a merchant downtown, but this is a kind of awkward question, but it's with the outside open space being a premium this summer. This is a very unique summer. You know people are going to be walking about, you know, people want to touch things. Well, how many variations of plans have you come, I mean, I just want to make sure we're balancing this with public use of the park and able to be able to do the whales in the park, art in the park, to the best of their ability. So, you know, I'm not opposed to it at all. I just, you know, I know the outside space is going to be at a premium this summer, and I just want to make sure we're balancing the needs of everybody to get this to fit in properly. I guess there's really not a question there. I just got to express my little reluctance in making sure that we're covering all our bases. That's kind of my point.
Yeah, well, as Dean was even proposing to put picnic tables in the park, and there is plenty of room to do that. The park is rather large. So this is only a small portion of the park. The bandstand is still free. The area around the bandstand is still free. The walkway is still free. So it won't take up a large portion of the park. And if touching becomes an issue, we've thought about roping them off. People love to do photo ops with them, and I have visions of people going under the ropes to do the photo ops, but we could work on something, you know, tastefully done, like with real ropes and something, if that becomes an issue. We think that by distancing the whales from different groupings and distancing them from the front, there's plenty of room then for people to move around them.
Thank you. Any other board members have a question for Susan? Corey, your hand's going to go down, right? You're going to put your hand up. Any remote participants? I see that we, Jeff, you want to weigh in on?
Yeah, I just think Susan and company have done a good job planning. And we're just cautioned that we spread them out, you know, as judiciously as we possibly can to ensure as much social distancing as possible. It's a great event. You're right, people like to kind of interact with it, but I think that the spread is very important.
That's why we're spreading them out, yeah.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I wish you well. Thank you.
So I see that the organizer, Janice Rogers, is on the call too, if she'd like to speak to the matter. Janice?
Hi. Yeah, I just want to clarify that the plan is to have 10 whales placed out directly behind the fence, and then the pods, which there'll be about four on either side of the park, and they would be spaced 12 feet apart. The schematic in the diagram is not exactly to scale right now. It's just to give you some idea of what we're thinking. So there would be four whales placed together, and there's 31 feet on one side, and the pods would only be five feet wide. So that gives you about, I think, 13 to 16 feet on either side. And then they would be spaced, again, you know, at least 12, each pod would be at least 12 feet apart. And the signage would encourage people to social distance at both ends of the park. I'm just, you know, drop off when we install them will be staggered so that there won't be, you know, a lot of people there at the same time. And I don't know if there's any other questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Janice from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion coming forward, or any further? Dean?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Art in the Park proposal as submitted by the Chatham Merchants Association.
Do I have a second? Okay, second. Any further discussion? Any discussion or questions from the remote participants? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a roll call, a roll vote. Corey?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And the chair says aye. Okay, motion approved and a little bit of normalcy for a regular event on Main Street. Thank you very much for the presentation. Yep. Okay, moving on to our next order of business. And this is a presentation of 90 Bridge Street update. We have Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson, on the presentation along with Ted Keon, Coastal Resources, Stuart Smith, I'm not sure he's here, from the Harbor Masters, and Renee Gagny, Shellfish Constable. So Dr. Dunkinson, are you making the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, thank you. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Selectmen. So as the board's probably familiar, the town bought 90 Bridge Street several years ago with the intention of creating a multi-use facility on that site with one of the primary components being a new shellfish upweller. We had about 18 meetings or so with the Board of Selectmen as well as a joint committee comprised of the Waterways Advisory Committee, the Shellfish Advisory Committee, the South Coastal Advisory Committee, town staff, as well as our engineers from STANTEC. And those were all public meetings. They encompassed about a three-year period. We came back to the board in 2018 with a recommendation for a site master plan. The board at that time felt that A, it was too expensive, and B, the use of the site was too intense. They asked us to go back and kind of relook at everything, which we did. The committees reconvened, and we came back to this board in March or April, I think it was April 1 of 2019, with a scaled-down plan, which you subsequently endorsed. And I included in, as part of your packet, the figure showing that recommended plan. We're here before you tonight. At that point, you gave us the okay to go ahead and move this project into the next phase, which was taking the conceptual plan that had been developed, which is basically a sketch on a piece of paper, and to start to move that into detailed engineering and subsequently into the permitting phase. So we're here before you tonight to basically go through that next step, which would be, and part, well, let me step back a second. Part of the reason why it's taken almost a year to bring this back to you, a couple of things. One, we had to wait a while to get proposals from STANTEC. They had some issues on their end with staffing and otherwise, and so it took a little bit longer to get their proposal. When we did get their proposal in, they had increased the amount of their engineering services beyond what they had originally presented to the combined committees, as well as the Board of Selectmen on the April 1 presentation. So we subsequently spoke with GEI engineers, who you probably know are the engineers that are doing the trap dock project for us. And we provided them all the information and asked them to provide us an engineering proposal for the project, which they did. We spent some time reviewing those two proposals, going back and forth with the two engineering firms to make sure we were able to compare apples and apples, that they both had, you know, the task broken out the same way and allocated the resources and whatnot. And so that took some time. In addition to that, we incurred some delay because of the fact that we had both the fish pier observation deck underway at the time, as well as the trap dock project. It was our intention that the fish pier would have been finished much earlier than it was, and we wouldn't have had two significant projects underway simultaneously. So that, then along with COVID-19, kind of resulted in some delay in getting this project to where it is. But as you know, we have now, pretty much, the fish pier observation deck project is finished, except for the VPL, the elevator. The railing for that went in on Friday. We've been in contact with both the engineer and the contractor in terms of scheduling the elevator company to come back and finish that and get that finished up so that we can then bring the state in and do the elevator inspection and then go after our certificate of occupancy for that project. And hopefully that's going to occur in the very near term. As you know, the trap dock project is complete. We've opened that up to the fishing community. There's a couple of minor punch list items remaining, but it doesn't impact the use of the facility at all. So that project, for all intents and purposes, is complete as well. So we're now ready to embark on 90 Bridge Street. So before you tonight, we're asking for your concurrence for two things, one of which is appropriation out of the waterfront bond for $125,000 for the first phase of engineering with GEI. We ended up choosing GEI over STANTEC for a number of reasons, not the least of which is their engineering price was significantly lower than the original proposal that we had gotten from STANTEC. So in talking with them, we've basically broken the engineering up into two phases. So the first phase, which is before you tonight for $125,000, will take the conceptual sketch on a piece of paper to the 35% engineering design level. Back at the end of May, we submitted a grant application to the Seaport Economic Council to the tune of approximately $300,000. That money would be used to take the engineering to the next step. So from 35% up to 100% as well as undertake the permitting. Unlike the trap dock, this project will entail a fairly significant amount of permitting. The trap dock, we pretty much kept the new dock in the same footprint as the old dock. So that really minimized any permitting. This project has several components to it that would basically be permitting from the very beginning. Not the least of which would be the overwater pile-supported upweller structure, which would be a permitting issue, as well as, as you know, a new bulkhead is proposed at this site as well, which is not currently permitted. So the permitting on this project would be a much longer timeline than any of our other recent projects. So we felt that by doing the engineering in two phases and getting that kicked off with $125,000 out of the waterfront bond, and then applying for the Seaport Economic Council grant, which we should hear about in late August or early September, that would dovetail with probably pretty close to the completion of the 35% engineering design, and then we'd be able to move right into the subsequent engineering phase from 35 up to 100 and start the permitting. Along with that, as you know, at this board's suggestion, we have been using Palmeroy Associates now to provide owners' representative services. Again, similar to the trap dock project, we are not necessarily required to have an owners' project manager, but we have been in contact with Palmeroy Associates to bring them on board for this project to do pretty much the same thing that they did for trap dock, which is oversee the project, work with town staff and the contractor and the engineer to get this, you know, to get these things completed in as timely a fashion as we can. So before you tonight, we're asking for $200,000 out of the waterfront bond to start the engineering process, as well as to bring Palmeroy Associates onboard to serve as owners' project representative. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dunkinson. I see that Peter has his hand up and Jeff. So we'll start there. Peter, and then everybody's got their hand up. Okay. Go ahead, Peter. You are muted, Peter.
Welcome, Dr. Bob. I'm going to put this in my terms and then ask just a couple of questions. You were, okay, we have a, let's see. The money that was allocated for this project was $2,090,000, basically, is what the paper says, our paper says. You've spent like 61K so far out of 75 that was allocated. And to get to where you are now, I don't know whether you're going to use the other 14,000 or not. I don't know. Then there's $26,000 that was left over from the fish pier. I don't know if you're, you could use that if you wanted to, I guess is what the point is. But if you do that, what I'm getting to is the money that's going to be left over, the amount of money that's going to be left over is going to be, depending upon how you use that, whether you get the $300,000 grant or not, is somewhere between, in general terms, 1.8 million to 2.1, 2.2 million. And I agree, I like the idea that you're going for 35% and looking for a certain, getting a 35% design. I guess the first question would be, is that close enough to get you a ROM, some sort of a rough order of magnitude? a rough order of magnitude cost of what this project would be? I'm not sure that's the case. I mean, you could always get a general cost. The second part of that is, as you go along, and you made the comment, and that's what I was wondering about, about using the $300,000 and then all the permitting. We're out now maybe a couple of years before we go out for bids, or is it something less than that? And I know you can't tell what it would be in the future, but how do you feel that this number that we have, which would be anywhere from 1.8 to 2.1, is still a good number when we're dealing with, you know, 2017 start date?
Well, yeah, let me address that in a couple of ways. The $2,090,000 number that you referenced, which was in the waterfront bond, when that was put together almost five years ago now, by the time it, you know, had to be prepared and then got to the following years, town meeting, that was a rough ballpark estimate at the time, based on little information in terms of what may happen at the site. As your Board is aware, we then spent, you know, almost three-plus years working with various committees on looking at, you know, what would be there. Probably the biggest change that occurred over that time period was the inclusion of the bulkhead. That was nowhere near any thought when that estimate was originally put together. So, that bulkhead alone, you know, is somewhere north of three-quarters of a million, almost $1 million. So, if you add that to the, you know, the $2 million, the $2 million that we had initially, you're now up at roughly a $3 million project. The cost estimates that were provided last April 1st in our presentation to the Board of Selectmen had a total project cost of about $4 million, and that was escalated to 2019 numbers, as it should have been. Sorry. Roughly $3.4 million. The original $4 million, the $4 million that I alluded to was based on the previous large-scale concept. It was subsequently scaled back. So, the new estimate, as of a year ago, was roughly $3.4 million. One of the things that I think we keep losing sight of, or maybe not, it's always been our intention to seek as much grant money for these projects as we can. As I'm sure your Board is well aware, for the Old Mill Bow Yard project, we were successful in getting a million-dollar grant from the Seaport Economic Council. We did get a small grant for engineering for Trap Dock. We applied for the construction funding for another $1 million for the Trap Dock. Unfortunately, we didn't get it, which we were all somewhat surprised at, given the fact that they had funded the initial engineering. So, it, you know, it's always our intent to get as much grant money as we can for these projects. So, once this project is ready to go for construction, we would definitely be seeking $1 million, which is the cap that you can get from Seaport Economic Council. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at. In terms of the timeline, you know, I'm optimistically thinking that, if possible, we can get, you know, if everything falls into place and we don't have any major hiccups on the permitting front, we definitely will not be ready for construction next winter, so the winter of 21, 2021. But potentially, we could be ready for construction in the winter of 21, 22. So, basically, you know, almost two years from now. Given the time it will take to get through engineering, the time it will take to get through permitting, you know, some of the permits can have a three, six-month time track to them. You know, that's not at all unusual. And as I said, this project has got two fairly significant permitting components, mainly being the overwater upweller and then the new bulkhead. So, that's, you know, an optimistic timeframe, provided everything falls into place.
Madam Chair, just to follow up, just real quick. Thank you. That answers my question. I'll just make a point. You never know what you're going to have until you have a set of engineering drawings. So, you know, I'm not against, you know, getting the $200,000, just to get us to a point where we could, you know, have bids out. And of course, the big question is, we can't see into the future. So, what's it going to be like two years from now, or a year and a half from now, to get budgets? Well, I, personally, I think this was supported by town meeting and supported by, I guess, the fishermen, that, you know, you've got to, you've got to do due diligence to get you to a point where you can find out how much it really is going to cost you. Thank you.
Yeah, just, if I may, just for clarity, the $200,000 will not get us to bid documents.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, the $200,000 will get us to that 35%, well, $125,000 in engineering will get us to 35%. There'll then be another engineering component after that, and that's what we've applied for the Seaport Economic Council grant. If we're not, for whatever reason, successful in getting that grant for basically the Phase Two engineering, we would come back to the Board and propose to you potential alternatives of how to fund that Phase Two engineering, whether we would, again, seek to take that out of the Seaport bond, or we identified some other funding source for that money.
Okay.
Thank you. Corey, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just to go back on the, a topic on grants. Now, usually, a project has to be on some kind of track, showing progress and whatever for the review and in the application of a grant. So, would delaying this, I guess, jeopardize us in filing for this grant? I mean, because timing is obviously essential on all these projects, and we've got to show some kind of forward tracking or process in the project. So, wouldn't delaying this work against us in the pursuit of these grants?
You know, it, obviously, it could. We applied for the grant. It was at the, it was due at the end of May. There wasn't, you guys weren't having a meeting. So, we spoke with the town manager. We went ahead and applied for the grant, you know, with the understanding that this was going to be coming before you in a couple of weeks, and you'd have the opportunity to discuss it. You know, we prepared the grant application based on all the information we had at the time. We indicated to the granting agency that this was going to be brought to the Board for that kind of first level of funding for the 125, but there was no guarantees to that. So, you know, hopefully, we'd be able to go and kind of give the granting agency an update and say, hey, the Board has approved this. We've, you know, I already have a contract sitting in my office from GEI. They're ready to go as soon as, you know, as soon as you guys authorize it. The town would then sign the contract on our side, and that would enable us to go back to the granting agency and kind of give them a quick update and say, hey, you know, we're moving ahead. The town is funding their portion of it, you know, to get this thing off the ground and get it moving.
So, follow up. So, with my feeling that, you know, we've been successful in the past with grants, I would hate to delay it from that perspective, also realizing for a couple of years, a year plus, in dealing with the permitting, you know, I think there's, a lot of people want to see this project finished, and I'm very reluctant to delay it any further. I know there's a lot of unknowns, but I think, I think we really need to move this discussion forward and get these, you know, the 35% status in play, and keep, you know, positioning ourselves best for the grants, and starting the ball rolling on the permitting, because it's a long road, it appears. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Corey. Jeff, you had your hand up, then Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Bob. Just so we're clear on the numbers, Bob, if I might. So, we've got 61K into it. Tonight, you're asking for 200. Of that 200, you've got a buck and a quarter that says we can get to 35%. We're going to need another 300 to get to a place where we can actually get documents that will allow us to discern whether or not the 3.4 million dollar number is the right number. Is that a correct statement? Is that a fair statement?
That, that is a pretty good synopsis of where we're at, yes.
Okay. So, we'd have, assuming we don't get the grant, the SEC grant for 300K, the town could conceivably have 561 invested to find out how much this puppy's going to cost us, this project's going to cost us.
At the, at the end of that expenditure, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know just how much it's going to cost, but you would have all your design plans and your bid-ready documents for that money.
But, but, but we could, we could, we'd have bid-ready documents that we could then bid to discern, to find out if the 3.4 is a good number or not.
Yes, yes. Obviously, the 3.4 number was based on just a, you know, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sketch, kind of a back-of-the-envelope sketch by the engineer. Once you start getting into the detailed design, your cost estimates become much more refined and much more accurate. Absolutely.
Totally understand that, and I think, I think at a minimum, we have to get to the point where we know what it's truly going to cost us. So, I think, I think it's foolish to not, to get to that point. But I also think that, you know, the permitting process is going to be lengthy here, as you note, the building, the upweller out over the water is going to be fraught with permitting difficulties, or potential difficulties, I should say. And the bulkhead itself is also going to be fraught with potential permitting difficulties. I would also, at some point, I would like to run the numbers on, and I, I think this is, I think the upweller is a little economic engine, or a fairly large economic engine, I should say, for the town, and I'm very supportive of the shellfish industry and the upweller. I think it's really cool. However, I'd love to see a return on investment on, what are the sales of our shellfish over the last 10 years, assuming, you know, or the next 10 years, projecting out, doing a DCF or whatever the finance guys want to do, on three-point, on an investment of 3.4 million. You know, what's payback? What's our return on investment? It's a neat, neat project. It's not going to be an easy project, and had we not had the Trap Dock in our, in our back pocket, I'd be fairly reluctant to tackle this one, but the Trap Dock went so well. I'm not going to use the, the observation deck at the fish pier as an example of what we can pull off as a town, because I think the Trap Dock was well done. I think your notion of bringing GEI in was a good one. That's a good idea. Better expertise at perhaps a lower, definitely a lower cost, and perhaps as good, if not better, expertise. So, those are my thoughts. I mean, I really would like to see an ROI going forward on this project. I think we do have to spend, I'm going to vote for the expenditure to the 200. I don't think the 300 grand is guaranteed, by the way, folks, because you don't know what the state coffers are going to do, given this, given the COVID. They're going to have, they're going to be, have difficulty getting receipts, tax receipts, and their local receipts, if you will. So, so, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not counting on a, on a grant here, although we've been very successful, and kudos to our team, but I'm not counting on getting grant here. I think we need to think about, are we going to shell out the 561 to find out whether or not the 3.4 is a good number? Those are my thoughts. I'm going to vote for the 200.
Thanks.
I, I'm not convinced that we're going to get the three or the, or the one downstream. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I have, I think we also have to weigh, when you're looking at that return on investment, the condition of our present upweller, but also the fact that this is, you said, popular, and it's an educational tool that's being utilized by school systems, as well as, you know, it's a tourist, it's a tourist attraction.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand me. I'm very supportive. I just think we need to go into this very complicated project with our eyes wide open, because this is not uncomplicated. This is a complicated little puppy here. I'm very supportive. I think it's, I think it's a neat project, but I think it's going to be expensive and complicated. We just want to have our eyes wide open, especially in these, you know, these complicated times, uncertain economic times.
Thanks, Jeff. Dean, you had your hand up. Unmute, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I had a couple of questions, and then I, I had a communication today from the chairman of the Finance Committee, who has submitted a letter to me, in my capacity as the liaison to the Finance Committee from the Board of Selectmen, and he asked me if I would read it, because he's unable to attend, and I wish to read that at some point, whenever I think it's appropriate. But my questions to Bob, I guess, or to Jill, why have an OPM at this point as opposed to the next phase?
We, we wanted to bring Palmeroy's, well, Jill can chime in, but I mean, the direction that we were asked to do was bring them on board early in the project. They actually participated in the choice of the engineer. They evaluated both of the engineering proposals when we, when we had two, and they gave us their counsel on, on comparing them. And then, obviously, you know, there's a lot of issues, because this is a non, a not uncomplicated project, and so having their counsel early on in the project can only be a good thing. You know, generally, you do try to bring the, the OPM or owner's rep or representative on as early as you can in the process, and that's what we did here, so.
Jill, you want to weigh in?
It's exactly that, and it's same for, if it was the fire station project, you bring them in, or the council on aging, at the very beginning, so that they're our representatives, so that if there's any questions of the engineer, or there could be any refinements or cost savings, they're in it from the very beginning.
So, the other question is allowing for the payment of the fish pier project and the Trap Dock project out of the waterfront bond, which is where I think that's coming from. Is the entire cost of this project expected to come out of that $11 million waterfront bond? Or does this have to go back to town meeting at some point?
Right now, this would not have to go back to town meeting. This was included in the waterfront bond. You know, obviously, the waterfront bond was put together, as I said, five years ago, and, and, you know, these projects were always envisioned, you know, to be a 10-year program, if you will, you know, and unfortunately, we all know what costs have done recently. You know, at one point in time, contractors were really sharpening their pencils and costs were down. That has changed a little bit recently, you know, and that's something we can't project.
Okay.
Money as we can, and then the remainder would come from the waterfront bond, so we would not have to go back to town meeting.
Well, Madam Chair, just a general comment, and I'm familiar with what the Finance Committee said, so that kind of influences what I'm going to say a little bit. I supported the waterfront bond when I was, you know, on the, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I also supported the acquisition of the Trap, of 90 Bridge Street when I was on the Finance Committee, and I, I'm supportive of the concept. I liked the, I thought it was a very pretty sketch, the final, there was the final preliminary version that was prepared to us, presented, prepared and presented to us. And I'm anxious to hear what, what the Chair of the Shellfish Committee, who I know is on this, attending this meeting, and I see the Chair of the South Coastal Committee, who has sent us a very thoughtful email about this. I think it's important, as Jeff said, at some point, to get some financial information about the return on investment here. I'm also concerned about the multiplicity of construction projects that the town has embarked on, some of them completed, some of them contemplated, including the senior center. And we've heard in the warrant from the, from the Finance Committee about that, and the Chair of the Finance Committee gave us a report on that back in February, expressing concern. So, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to come down on this tonight. I want to support it, but I do have some concerns, and I want to keep it up in mind until I hear all the conversation and discussion, and I'll defer reading this letter until you tell me I can, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome to read it now, and then I think we want to hear from some of the committee folks, and perhaps other staff if they're on, and then the public. Go ahead.
It's a bit long, but again, Steve and Daniel, the Chair of the Finance Committee, reached out to me today, and we specifically requested that I read this letter, and I said I would. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. To begin with, I want to declare that I am a minority shareholder of Aquacultural Resources Corporation, ARC, based in Dennis. ARC sells, she sells shellfish seed in the town of Chatham. I stand to benefit from sales of shellfish seed to the town of Chatham. I have spoken with an attorney from the State Ethics Commission, who has advised me that I, as Chairman of the Chatham Finance Committee, do not have a conflict of interest in this matter, given the relatively small percentage of my ownership interest in ARC and my ability to influence its corporate decisions. I am reaching out to you tonight as Chairman of the Finance Committee. Committee and not strictly as a taxpayer of Chatham. The 90 Bridge Street project was presented to town meeting in May of 2017 as a $2 million project to relocate the town shellfish upweller. By November of 2017, six months later, the project cost had grown to over $4 million, not including the actual interior fit out of the new structure. Several of you, as then members of the Board of Selectmen, spoke against the scope and scale of the project and returned it to the committee, to committee for downsizing. As I'm sure you are aware, the Finance Committee has been opposed to the scope and scale of this project since it was presented in November of 2017. To be very clear, we are not opposed to the notion of a new upweller for the town, but rather, we are opposed to a project of such scope and cost, longer seeing the value of the annual commercial shellfish landings and the benefits of a robust recreational shellfish program, shellfishing program. It was only a few short months ago that the town manager wrote in her budget message that town staff was reaching a breaking point, given, given all their obligations and responsibilities. The Finance Committee in our report to the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant suggested that it was time for town leadership to consider deferring or delaying significant capital projects in an effort to lessen the pressure on town employees. We have also, as you know, been encouraging a comprehensive prioritization of proposed large capital projects. For context, the town currently has a five-year roster of capital projects which totals over $64 million. The West Chatham Roadway Design Project, the Coral Road Intersection Redesign Project, a new Council on Aging Building, ongoing renovations to the Fish Pier, the Trap Dock Project, a new salt shed, a redesigned project for the transfer station, and more. And for the avoidance of doubt, this $64 million figure does not include spending on our ongoing wastewater project. We have urged in our current report to the warrant that the Board of Selectmen give consideration to the idea of needs rather than wants. At a time of significant economic uncertainty, we reiterate our thinking that it is inappropriate for Chatham to begin yet another significant capital project. Further, the Finance Committee has for several years now advocated that this town pay more attention to the social infrastructure of our community, to the quiet parts of our community, as we have described it, rather than to its physical infrastructure. More than ever, in the midst of a global pandemic causing significant local dislocation, isn't now the time for that to happen. We currently have private individuals and a not-for-profit, assuming responsibility for the cost of purchasing food for the Chatham Elementary School Food Pantry, which served over 400 in, in need Chatham residents in the last two-week cycle. This support will be provided for the months of July and August. We have a local non-for-profit which is providing rent and mortgage assistance to residents of Chatham harmed by the economic effects of the pandemic. We have just 11 kids entering the forthcoming kindergarten class at Chatham Elementary, something correlated to the lack of affordable community housing in town. At the same time, we have spent close to $1 million in important and necessary dredging to keep Stage Harbor open and to nourish the south-facing beaches, a number that will only be going up. We have spent 3, 3 million, $3.14 million to acquire and to replace the trap dock. Isn't it time to reconsider our priorities? When the Finance Committee toured the current upweller facility two years ago, the senior staff member who led us on the tour was asked, what would happen if the funding for a new facility was not approved? The staff member replied that the town would make necessary upgrades to the current facilities. The Finance Committee has stood opposed to the scope and prospective cost of this project, and we continue to urge the Board of Selectmen to evaluate what this town really needs at this time versus what it basically wants. Thank you. That's the letter. That represents the view of the Finance Committee. I, I only read it as, and it, it does, I'll just offer this editorial comment that all, I think all major projects in the cities are best, best sold to the public when they go forward without opposite, the opposition of the Finance Committee. So I'll leave it at that. I'm looking forward to hearing what others have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I haven't weighed in yet, and I do want to weigh in on the aspect of some of the points that the, the Finance Chair did say, especially about some of the need-based nonprofit giving that's happening right now during the pandemic. One of the things that I understand in some of the work that we did with the 365 was, a support of the working waterfront infrastructure was important to the working community of Chatham. I know personally that when, at times, when, when I have, or anybody has had a downturn from a job or whatever, the first thing that most locals know to do is to go scratch some Cohogs to make some money. And the upweller is a, is a, a program that has been ongoing and a successful program, not just for commercial shellfishing, but also from, for the recreational aspect that it, that it implies. So when you talk about social aspect work, that this, this conceivably is part of that kind of work that we should be doing in supporting a working waterfront. I just want to hear if we have anybody from, I think we have, we have the Chair of the Shellfish Advisory Committee, Jamie Basset, and we have the Chair from the South Coastal Management Plan, Michael Westgate, on the call, if either one of them would like to comment on this. I see Jamie's hands risen already. So Jamie, if you want to weigh in, welcome. You might have to unmute, Jamie. You're still muted.
How's that?
Perfect. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, great. Madam Chairwoman, I'm Jamie Basset, Chairman of the Shellfish Advisory Committee. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak on this business. Madam Chairwoman, as you know, the Waterways Committee, the, the South Coastal Harbor Planning Committee, and the Shellfish Advisory Committee all met in joint session to discuss and deliberate on the disposition of 90 Bridge Street. Indeed, over the last four years since October of 2016, these committees, your committees convened seven times with a near full attendance. That's approximately 21 of your committee appointees, meeting to discuss 90 Bridge Street at the community center, in meetings that were open to the public, and also open to the Finance Committee. These meetings were publicized, and all of Chatham citizens and stakeholders were encouraged to attend. I don't believe I saw any member of the, of the Finance Committee at any of these meetings. This does not include any individual public meeting, public committee meetings, of which there were many, that had this topic on their agendas. What we heard, Madam Chairwoman, was that Chatham wants the upweller at 90 Bridge Street to be built. The residents of Chatham recognize that shellfishing is a year-round and crucial part of the fabric of our community. It has been so for decades, indeed, longer than that. Over the years, Chatham's commercial shellfish permits have numbered from between 300 to 700, with Chatham's recreational permits topping 3,000. Chatham has had upweller operations for more than 20 years now, and the positive economic impact for our community has already been explained and presented to the Board of Selectmen unnumerous occasions, but we can present again, if you'd like. The recreational value alone can easily be defended against the backdrop of the current COVID-19 crisis. While the parks have been closed, Chatham recreational permits have been active, providing Chatham residents with a much-needed opportunity to recreate in an ideal social distancing setting. Not only that, but more critically, the fruits of our upweller have also provided an avenue for Chatham residents to avoid grocery store hotspots, remain safe, remain self-sufficient, and harvest their own food. I wonder if anyone can place a value on that. I would urge the Board to close this business and make the decision to move forward with the upweller, 90 Bridge Street project post haste. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I would, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead. I think you're muted again, though. Excuse me, Michael, you have to speak up or turn your volume up. We can't hear you as well as we could a minute ago. Now, a little louder. Yeah, still can't hear. Try it now. Why don't we give you a moment? There you go. You're right there. Go ahead. There you are. Yep.
Okay. There's a time delay. In 2014, the Board of Selectmen approved the, approved the South Coastal Harbor Plan. 2015, the Commonwealth approved it.
Hold on, Michael. If, if the television is on or another apparatus is playing, you might want to turn that off to make your presentation.
Okay.
There you go.
I think we're on that.
Okay.
Highest priority on the plan is an upweller. An upweller is critical for this town, both for the commercial selectmen, commercial shellfishermen, and.
We're having a little bit of difficulty, but I think I get the sense, if everybody feels like they've gotten the sense of what Michael is saying. If you want to call in rather than use your computer, you can give that a try.
We also received Michael's letter.
And we've also received your letter, so.
Hello?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay. 2015 Commonwealth.
Okay, Michael, hold on. You'll have to turn off your computer and just use your phone. But we all, yeah, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
It's critical to the town to have shellfishing. It's interrelated with the, the number of kids entering the school. It's interrelated with people being able to earn a living here. It's interrelated to the health of the community. And we need to move forward with, with this funding as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Michael. We did receive a, a letter from Michael, and it was circulated amongst the, the, the Selectmen, as Dean had noted. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to, on, in the meeting that would like to weigh in on this? I think Bob Davis, you, you had sent, sent some information. Are you there? Are you on? Okay, all right. And, okay, well, let's get it back to the board, and then we'll, we'll ask for more feedback if we need. All right. So we don't have a motion on the table, but we have a proposal here from Dr. Duncanson to approve the next steps. Does anybody want to entertain a motion, or do we need to have further discussion on this? Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, Dr. Duncanson, I just want to be clear. If we approve the $200,000 this evening, do, we, we don't, we get 35% of a design. We don't get a full design. So we're really relying on another 300K that we're not being asked to approve tonight, and/or the state billing upward, or giving us a grant for 300K to get a final design so that we can get construction costs. Is, is that correct? So right now, you're asking for 200K tonight, but that doesn't get, get us even close to knowing whether 3.4 is the number or not, without that other 300K?
We can, you know, we can do another cost estimate at 35%. Obviously, it'll be a cost estimate based on 35%. But yeah, we, we may, you know, we made the decision rightly or wrongly to split this up and not come to you and ask for the whole amount, because we were applying for the, you know, the grant money. But as I indicated in the memo, if we don't get the grant, we would come back to you folks, probably the end of the summer or early fall, and say, we didn't get the grant. Are you okay with us, you know, getting the, the remainder for the engineering out of the waterfront bond?
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I see that Jeff Hayner has his hand up. If, if you don't mind, we'll jump to him, and then, then Dean, and then Peter. Mr. Hayner, would you like to speak? You'll have to unmute yourself if you're muted. We're having the technical difficulty evening. Are you there, Mr. Hayner? Okay, you're still on mute, Mr. Hayner. So we'll go back to Dean, and then we'll see if you unmute yourself. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you. I just had a question. Bob, so when would the Seaport Council make its decision? And would it be possible or practical to condition tonight's vote on the receipt of that grant?
We don't expect to hear from the Seaport Economic Council till probably August or early September. You know, if we don't get that grant, and, and, you know, this is predicated, the whole point behind requesting the 125,000 tonight, was to basically get the engineering going, as opposed to waiting until we hear what the status of the Seaport grant is. You know, so we'd basically lose another three months or so in, in getting anything started.
Okay. Peter, did you have a question?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. The, I, I personally like the idea of doing the 35%. You're going to do an, if Jeff mentioned, this is a relatively, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. I may have some, some differences with what the Finance Committee says, especially in the areas where they talk about housing and so forth, because housing, there's funding for that. The problem is, is, is being able to put the housing out there, going through our, our zoning bylaws. That's going to be the issue. But besides that, I understand where they're kind of coming from. But anyways, you get the 35, you get the 35%. There's a, there's a, and as, as Dr. Bob said, you could get an estimate. I call, I'm used to calling it a ROM. You get a rough order of magnitude. What you've done is you start narrowing down what your costs are. I wouldn't, I would not tie the 300 or $295,000 to this vote right now, mainly because once we get the 200, we're going to have some idea. And, you know, it's, and it's, okay, it's a year or two in advance, but that's not unusual for, for big programs and complex programs. And then you have the option of deciding what are you going to do? And that would be a better time to really reconsider than to do it now. I mean, we, you know, the, the trap dock was approved. I understand that, that the, what the Finance Committee said is, oh, we just kind of fix up the one we have. Well, I, I don't know what that cost, you know, but it's a couple million dollars, and it, was it worth it? I, I, I just don't know. But I, I am, I am, I'm in favor of approving the $200,000. Let's move ahead with it as far as, so we can come up with some kind of realistic estimate of what we're going to do. This is not building a house. You know, like you said, it's complex, and you go through the process of doing it. And anytime you have a very large, a, a program like this, you have to narrow down the, the risk that you're going to take. And if it gets to be too much, it's not. Thank you.
Peter, do you want to make a motion on that, then, if you're ready to approve it?
You want to hear from?
Yeah, we can make the motion and then move forward with other comments. I'm just trying to, it's 8:30. I'm just trying to move this forward.
Sure. Yeah, I, I moved that we approved the funding of $125,000 for engineering and $75,000 for the PA as, as, as presented in the, in the applicants.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
I'll second.
All right. So I, I see that Jeff Hayner is back. Jeff, if you want to unmute yourself and then have a comment, we can listen to you. And I see that Bob Davis is on the call as well. Jeff?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Okay, that's all right. That's fine. I, whatever happened, happened. I'll bow out.
I'll bow out. So I'm, no, go ahead.
All right, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, did you have a comment? Because I see that you're on the call.
Bob Davis?
Yep, go ahead, Bob. A member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Thank you. I am stunned at the fact that after four years of a project that was well-handled and had public scrutiny, there was 11th hour opposition from the Chairman of the Finance Committee. And I am not impressed by the fact that he had a lawyer state that he had no conflict of interest. He himself stated that he had ownership in what is his de facto competitor. And in reading from the committee handbook on conflict of interest, a conflict of interest may exist if a committee member can reasonably expect that his or her family conduct will directly result in financial benefit to the member or the member's family, business associates, employers, or businesses that the member represents in private life. Further, it's his obligation, in my opinion, to recuse himself of all discussions relative to the upweller because of the obvious conflict. And again, reading from the committee handbook, recusal is a responsibility to individual member and not subject to request by members of the committee or the public. When a committee member recognizes that a potential conflict of interest exists, the member should announce recusal from all participation in the matter, i.e. from discussion, questioning, commenting, and voting. It's been several years since this whole subject has been ramped up by Mr. Daniels, including making the 90 Bridge Street his poster child. So I submit that the fact that he has an attorney's opinion does not absolve him from his personal ethical responsibility of not commenting on what is clearly a competitive financial situation.
So, Mr. Davis, it is up to the Chair, the Finance Committee himself, to recuse. It's not up to us to ask him to do so. And your comment is noted.
I'm merely reading for the record. In my opinion, he failed to do so. I understand everything you're saying, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Do you have any further comment about the upweller in itself?
Well, again, I think the Finance Committee, had they done their homework, would be able to answer most of the questions that are being asked because this has gone on for four years. The financial aspects of it, what it contributes to the economy of Chatham. It's been out there for several years. It seems to me that the Finance Committee, had they done their homework, would be able to answer many of their own questions. So I am supportive of it, obviously being a member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the remote participants on this matter?
Elaine Gibbs?
Elaine, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to say that in terms of the Finance Committee's position, in terms of institutional stress, they've had this concern for the last year or two that we are biting off an awful lot. I would also point out that, you know, the 11 million waterfront omnibus package wasn't 2014, this is six years later. And we're in the middle of a COVID crisis. So I'm kind of shocked that we're talking about going forward on any project right now. In terms of the Seaport Economic Council, that is Baker's program. And for them to put restrictions on us when Baker's putting restrictions on us because of COVID, they need to talk to each other. I would hope that the very least we would do at this point is to not move forward until we find out if we're going to get 300,000. Because if we start spending money and then we don't get it, then we come back and we say, well, we've already spent this money, so let's keep going forward. We're slowly, we've been eating away at that 11 million. You know, some of our, all of these projects are topping out at the highest numbers that we've seen. You know, we found out, well, there's going to be an extra million here and there. And pretty soon, we're going to run out of that 11 million. So I would hope that there's a moratorium at this point. Until we find out what's going to happen economically because of COVID, the businesses are going to open up. We don't know what the impact is going to be on our bottom line in terms of the town budget. And the only other point I would like to make is, you know, an owner project manager is supposed to be totally independent and autonomous. We're supposed to hire them on independent projects. They're the independent voice. We keep using Palmeroy. He's been on the Fish Pier. He's on the Council on Aging. I think he was working on the South Jog. I think we need another OPM on a project. I think he's stretched too thin. And I think that's going to become a problem. And we're talking major bucks here. And if we're paying that out, I would like somebody who is totally focused on one project, not the entire waterfront. I don't think that's necessary. So I would hope that we step back a little bit and just see what happens. And I absolutely agree with Mr. Dykens that we need to look at what the return of our investment is on this. You know, is it? We've got to become scrupulously objective and start prioritizing. I think that's what FinCom said. It wasn't just Stephen Daniel. It was the entire Finance Committee saying we have to prioritize our projects. They are all really important, but some have to be more important than others. And I, as a citizen, don't know which ones are. I really don't. And I think there is some concern that members of the board don't know which ones are. And until we go through that exercise, I think we should kind of put a halt to spending until we find out what's going on with COVID and if we're going to survive this thing through the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. The OPM process, Jill, it's, I guess, a particular business doesn't just work on one project at a time. I mean, there are multiple projects. How do we, and we must put this stuff out to bid or chosen in a particular manner? Any comment on that? I just, I just, I don't, I don't understand why. I mean, I think Palmeroy's done a great job for the town. And I'm just wondering, you know, what the issue is here about having him do another project, if anything.
Yeah, the owner's project manager is not independent. It's, they represent the town, the Board of Selectmen. So we had used them in a peer review manner for the Fish Pier. And with this not requiring an owner's project manager that we're able to contract directly with them, with the vertical buildings such as the, I'm sorry, the fire station that had to go through a formal procurement.
Okay.
Again, they represent the town's interests. They're there to look out for the taxpayers' money, but it's also based on the Board of Selectmen's directive for the project.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that. Any other comments from the board? Dean?
Madam Chair, this is a very difficult one for me. I don't slide as easily as some of my colleagues, I think, toward approving this. I don't necessarily subscribe to everything that is in Mr. Daniel's letter, but I do think he speaks, and my understanding is he speaks for others on the Finance Committee. Whether he's speaking, whether he himself chooses to participate or not. I read the letter as it is and he can speak for himself on any issues related to those that Mr. Hayner brought up. But I'm not convinced that waiting two or three months is a big deal. We just, we just voted to, or made a determination to put off a recall, approval of the senior center until the special town meeting. There was a unanimous feeling on the Board of Selectmen not to go forward with that at this time. We all support the new senior center. And we will revisit that in the fall. The Finance Committee took the same position. So I'd like to, I'd like to see, in addition to a documented return on investment, and I respect everything that's been said. I understand and I appreciate, I've listened to everybody here. And I understand the points in rebuttal that you made, Madam Chair, to the Finance Committee letter. And I think I agree with you. And I agree with what Mr. Kokolas had to say about affordable housing. But I'd like to see that the finance, the financials documented more. And I'd like to see if we get this Seaport grant. Because if we don't, then we're talking about another 300,000. I'd like to be able to hang my hat on the fact that we have this 11 million that has already been approved by Town Meeting. I think it's time to take a little bit of a breather before we just go ahead with another project. We're just, we're just at the completion date of two major projects, one which took longer than it should have, but it did. And I think we're happy with the results. So I'm probably going to vote no on this motion.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Mr. Hayner, I see that your hand is raised again. Do you have a comment? And you need to unmute.
I do, and I hope you can hear me.
Yes, yes.
Basically, I think something's being missed here. It's not all the bottom line. The shellfish community depends upon the upweller. The upweller brings in people from outside of Chatham, non-residents, everybody, in other words, to many people. Chatham is shellfishing. And we're missing that. You know, I, it just, it is impossible for me to imagine Chatham without shellfishing. The other thing is, and this has not been spoken about tonight, is the current upweller, it's falling apart. It cannot operate very much longer. We've submitted information about that. And it is just totally an untenable building. And it, something has to be done. And if we keep putting it off, it's going to fall apart. We're going to lose the shellfishing community. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want, I guess, weigh in a little bit here again. And just say that, you know, Town Meeting spoke to this issue in going forward. So, you know, I know that we have concerns about spending and we have concerns about issues around that. But, you know, what Peter said is, we don't really know what this is going to cost. And we can look at it as a, as a beginning of finding out exactly that. So, any other comments from the board? Peter?
Yeah, I hate to disagree with my colleague in some ways. Yeah, we put the COA off, but before we did that, we approved 75,000 for an alternative approach. We decided we were going to go through with both options for the COA so that we could come to a decision on whether or not we wanted to do the COA. And I'm being a little bit facetious on this. But to me, my understanding, and the way I've worked this before, that 200,000 is tied to the 300. You start with the 200, that 300 is worth a lot. If you wait, it's going to be, we'll get 300, but we're still going to might need that or maybe more. And then we're going to be behind. I think it's just good sense to, you know, we have the funding there. It's enough to get us to a point where I would think that Dr. Bob could come back with some sort of a rough order of magnitude, understanding what it is. And also, a return on investment, you can put into a return on investment. And I'm not a finance guy because I, you know, but I've done these. You put into a return on investment, just not dollars. But what it, what does it mean to the, and in my case, with your industry and to what it's going to do in the future? And some of those are soft numbers that you have to look at. What is the impact to the people that you're there? And what is it going to mean to them? Because then you have to draw, if you're going to get a return on investment, you have to draw out what that impact would be and what it would be to you in the future. I don't want to go through a whole issue of this thing, but I think, I don't know. I believe that we should at least spend the 200. Get us to a point where we have an idea of where we're going. To cut it off right now, to say because we're in dire straits, it works both ways. You don't know what's going to happen. Are we going to survive COVID? Are we going to be, some people think we're going to be back to, back to normal in a year and a half. Do I agree with that? I don't know. But in any case, it works both ways and it's a small amount of money. Thank you.
The state just put together a 54 million food security grant that just came out. And the state's recognizing food security could be an issue for us. I just want to make that comment that there is other alternative monies out there that could be accessed for this project. Jeff, you had your hand up. And then, Michael, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think some very, thank you, Madam Chair. I think some very cogent thoughts and arguments have been made, both by the Chair of the Finance Committee and by Ms. Gibbs and Mr. DeCastro and the fellow, my fellow members of the board. I, number one, agree with Mr. Kokolas in that we're not at the same point in the ideology of this project as we were with the Council on Aging. I think we need to spend 125,000 to get to that 35% level to get that order of magnitude for this project. So I'm going to vote for that. I'm not sure we need Palmeroy yet. I go back to that notion. I'm going to support a motion that says, let's spend the 125 to get to 35% stage. And let's see what that looks like. I think it's only fair to this project that we do that. To the softer issues here, this, the shellfish industry here is part of our, our local infrastructure and the fabric of our community. There is no doubt. I've spent years, I was years, when I didn't go offshore, I went, I went shellfishing. So it is really part of the infrastructure and the fabric of our community. So I think this is a really cool project. Now, that being said, it's in the context of, you know, a pandemic where money is dear. So let's, I think we, I think we start slowly here. I'd be willing to vote for the 125K. I'm not sure we need Palmeroy yet. And Bob, I defer to you. Why do we really need him yet? We haven't put any shovels in the ground. You know, I just, so I'd support the 125 to see what the 35% looks like in terms of the order of magnitude for this project. You know, and if money wasn't an issue, this is a wonderful project, you guys. But we've got to couch it in the rest of what we're doing here as a town. And I agree with some of what Mr. Daniel had to say, folks.
Jeff, did you want to amend the motion or?
I would. I would move the same motion that Mr. Kokolas made, but for 125,000 to get to the 35% level. I think we need to do that. I think we need to do that.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. And Peter, any, go ahead. You're muted, Peter. But I think you're still muted, Peter.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be really quick. Jeff asked Dr. Bob what he thought about that. The first thing that came to my mind is, do you need Palmeroy to come up with an estimate?
Straight answer is no. You know, Palmeroy Associates was being brought in at basically following your direction, the board's direction, after various discussions on the Fish Pier Observation Deck and the fact that that project did not go as well as any of us wanted it to. So we brought Palmeroy Associates in right at the very beginning of the Trap Dock project. You know, they are involved in projects, and this gets to Jeff's comment. They are involved in projects outside of just strictly construction. As Jill and I alluded to, they are involved, you know, or should be involved right through the design process because sometimes design changes could be made early on that, A, give you a better project and B, save you money during construction. So that's why we were proposing to bring them on right at this stage. You know, we have a concept, but, you know, having somebody else bring an independent look to it, as well as new engineers may have some ideas that the previous engineers didn't bring as well. So we were just trying to follow along with your guidance that we provide that additional level of oversight on these larger town projects.
Thank you, Bob. Did you have anything further you wanted to add? Because your hand was up. Bob?
No, I was, I was going to respond to Jeff.
Madam Chair, was that motion seconded?
Yes, it was seconded.
I seconded.
Yep. So, Dr. What's Gate and then Corey? Go ahead, Michael. You'll have to unmute. You'll have to unmute.
I just want to say, of all the projects facing the town, this is the one job generating project. And I'd like to see it move forward as expeditiously as it possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
Yes, Madam Chair. I think it's short-sighted not to include the 75,000. This is going to be a project of multiple complexities, you know, permitting, et cetera, et cetera. And it's going to cost some money. We know that. We have a bond, you know, 11 million plus bond article that we put forth several years back. I think, I think it'd be short-sighted of us not to add that 75,000 at this stage. If we're going to drop the 125, I really do. I think it's, I think we have to I think it's, I think we have to be in at that level to make this efficient for the project. So I would, I'm not going to vote for the motion on the table. And I'd be prepared to go back to the original motion.
Okay. Peter?
No, I'll let Dean go. I spoke a couple times.
Dean, did you have something you needed to?
Jeff, if I might, was he, did Bob's response to the question that you posed change your opinion on what I'll call a compromise motion, which I've been intending to support, but I'm not sure?
It did not. I think, I think we don't need him right now.
The other question I want to ask is of the town manager in light of Bob's response. Is having Palmeroy on board at this point comparable to what, contrasting to what we didn't do with respect to the Fish Pier project? Is bringing him on board now something which we had done on the Fish Pier project earlier on? Would that have, is that what we're trying to do here, to avoid the kind of problems we have there?
That's one thing. Plus, it took a lot of staff time or for staff members to be involved with the Fish Pier project. And when we brought him in, he was able to offer some solutions. And also, he was able to communicate with the contractor and the engineer to try to, I guess, do some dispute resolution to try to get the project done. So had he been brought in at the very beginning, I don't know if things would have changed. Again, the outcome is a really good project. It was just the difficulties of getting to that outcome. And I think he was essential to getting us to that outcome.
Thank you. I guess I'm still persuaded that a delay of two or three months until we hear from the Seaport Advisory Council is all that damaging.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table that's amended from the original recommendation. Is there anybody who wants to change that motion, or are we prepared to vote? Corey?
No, I mean, I'd love to offer amendment to add back the 75,000, but I don't know if there's a second out there.
Is there a second out there to add back the 70?
I have a second for that.
You're going to second. Okay. Any further discussion on that?
So we're back to the original motion.
We are back to the original motion.
The original motion. Okay. So there's no compromise.
Okay. So you ready, ready to take a vote? I'm going to pull a group. Dean?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. 4-1-0. Okay. Thank you. We'll move forward. Thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is reappointments. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. All right. Our next order is reappointments of advisory and statutory committee members. So we have a multitude of them. The first one is for, yes, go ahead.
May I just almost do it in a consent calendar fashion or with one sweeping vote? Unless there are particulars, particular points that the individual members will want to.
Okay. I'll, go ahead, Jeff. I'll.
No, I think we do this consent. They're all incumbents, and there's no issues. There are no issues.
So I'd be happy to read, I'd be happy to read the whole list so that the public knows what we're voting as one motion.
Okay, if you want to read the whole list, go ahead. I do have to abstain from voting for the Waterways Committee, though. So we'll have to take that one out of the consent.
So I'll take that off the calendar there, as it were. So I move the reappointment of the incumbent members of the following committees. Board of Assessors, I move to appoint Robert B. France to the Board of Assessors until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Bike Race Committee, I move to appoint Kay Bradley Bivens to the Bike Race Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint David Whiting to the Bike Race Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Stephen Wardle to the Bike Race Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Cemetery Commission, I move to appoint Stephen Hart to the Cemetery Commission until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Committee for the Disabled, I move to appoint Ron Heald Yurka to the Committee, excuse me if I got that wrong, to the Committee for the Disabled until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Robert Lear to the Committee for the Disabled until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Priscilla Pat Ford to the Committee for the Disabled until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint John Ray to the Committee for the Disabled until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Cultural Council, I move to appoint Leslie Porcoski to the Cultural Council unless, until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Economic Development Committee, I move to appoint George Kalil to the Economic Development Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Molly McGregor to the Economic Development Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Energy Committee, I move to appoint Catherine McClellan to the Energy Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Golf Advisory Committee, I move to appoint Bruce Bogartis to the Golf Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Denise Yocum to the Golf Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Sheila Nugent to the Golf Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Human Services Committee, I move to appoint Paul Brown to the Human Services Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Susan Whitcomb to the Human Services Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Gloria Hicks to the Human Services Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Park and Recreation Commission, I move to appoint David Malos to the Park and Recreation Commission until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Public Ceremonies Committee, I move to appoint Carol Abel to the Public Ceremonies Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Open Space Committee, I move to appoint David Doherty to the Land Bank Open Space Committee as the Chatham Conservation Foundation representative until June 30, 2021, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Shellfish Advisory Committee, I move to appoint Jamie Bassett to the Shellfish Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint John Kennaaway to the Shellfish Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Traffic Safety Committee, I move to appoint David Morrison to the Traffic Safety Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, I move to appoint Debbie Aikman to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Ted Whitaker to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Okay. All right. I'll pull a group. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Dean, for that motion. And so we have the Waterways Advisory. Does somebody want to make a motion on that?
Okay.
I will.
Go ahead, Corey.
Okay. I move to appoint David Davis to the Waterways Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. And I also move to appoint DeCosmer to the Waterways Advisory Committee until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair abstains. Thank you. And I just want to, the board would like to thank the following members of various committees who did not seek reappointment for the services to the town. David Aikman, Community Preservation Committee at Large Member, even though she is still serving on the water sewer. Dee DeHoltz, Conservation Commission. Cecily Moranis, Cultural Council. Jane Moffett, Historical Commission. And Steve DeBoer, Summer Residents Advisory Commission, Council. Yes.
There is, I just wanted to mention with respect to Jane Moffett. We had some developments today, so she is going to participate in the interviews. And I think she's going to be seeking an alternate visit.
Thank you. I remember that conversation with you as I was listening. Okay. Thank you very much. A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Okay. Take a roll. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. It is now 9:08. A little over our goal time, but good job, everyone. And thank you very much for participating. Have a good evening.
Thank you.